Remember that Nicole will join us live immediately following her presentation. If you have a question for her during the chat session, I mean during during the presentation, you can put it in the chat area and I'll make sure to be to ask her immediately following her presentation. So I think we're we're setting out, we're ready to start with Nicole Bivens Collinson.
So thank you to AFI. I really appreciate you having me back at your town hall. I hope everyone is staying healthy and that all of your lives have remained untouched by COVID-19. I'm really sorry this isn't in person, but I think that we've kind of adapted a little bit to a virtual reality, at least for the short term. To say that a lot has changed since last year, I think is really an understatement. And it's not just our every aspect of our lives, but it's also resolved the elections and some of the trade policies that have been put in place. In case you missed it, President like Biden will have be our next president in January. And he's going to have a much different approach to trade issues that's going to impact all of you. So I want to talk about two different phases of the trade and its impact. First, I want to talk about the possibilities of things that might happen between now and the end of the year or now until the end of January 20th, whenever we have the transition to the new government and both by the administration and by Congress. And then I want to talk to you about what we might see in a Biden administration. So first, let's talk about what can we expect or what might we see under the Trump administration in the next couple of months, 50 days, I think is what it is. So first, let's look at China. As you know, that there are tariffs in place on a lot of Chinese items. Right now, it's very real possibility that the president may seek to increase the additional tariffs, Section 301 tariffs that are on items on List 4A. As you probably know, those are all currently at seven and a half percent. You could increase those to 15% or even to 25% to put them on par with the goods that are subject to tariffs under Lists 1, 2, and 3. In addition, you may remember that items on List 4B were suspended. The reason they were suspended is because the president wanted to avoid taxing those. Many of them were consumer items and that he wanted to make sure that those weren't taxed before Christmas. Well, the Christmas buying and shopping season and importing season is over. We are upon that season, so there's no reason to continue the suspension, which means tariffs could go in place maybe at the same level as List 4A, which could be seven and a half, 15, or even 25%. But that's a real possibility. There's also the possibility of adding additional entities to the Department of Commerce, Bureau of Industry and Securities list. And that's a list that will restrict your ability to engage and export with companies. Now, many of you might think, well, I'm not an exporter, I'm an importer. That may be true, but if there is an entity on this list, and let's say that you have an invent a software program that you use to manage your inventory and you want to give that to your supplier so that you can have your two systems connected. Giving that software or supplying that software to an entity on that list could be determined to be a violation of our export laws. So you've got to look at those and there's a lot of entities going on there from China. Additionally, the Department of Treasury's Office of Foreign Assets Control called OFAC has added many, many entities to its specially designated nationals list. Now, that doesn't have so much to do with goods. It doesn't deal with whether you can import something or export something. What that has to deal with is whether or not you are engaging in some activity, some transaction that results in some sort of financial benefit to an entity identified on that list. So it's really about whether or not you are engaging in any kind of transactions that might be impacted. The other is that there are a lot of anti-dumping and countervailing duty cases that could be self-initiated. The Department of Commerce Secretary Ross could initiate several of those. He can also self-initiate anti-circumvention investigations because there have been several instances where the Department of Commerce has determined that goods which may have technically and legally have a different country of origin are really just trying to circumvent the Chinese tariffs. So that could take place. We could also see the Department, the Homeland Security Customs and Border Protection, CBP, starting to enforce more of their anti-circumvention investigations. So not only can the Department of Commerce do an investigation, but the CBP can do a very specific on a single import. Like Commerce will do it on a country or on a product. The CBP can do it on a company and on an importer for reasons of suspicion of illegally trying to circumvent anti-dumping, countervailing, or other duties. And we've seen a lot of those investigations. Now, part of the reason we've seen an increase in those types of investigation is because the laws were changed and this this ability was given to CBP in 2016 under the Trade Facilitation and Trade Enforcement Act. So it just kind of coincides with the Trump administration. But since 2016, the CBP has started over 131 different investigations. So it's out there, it's going, and it could be used with greater rigor or a little more robust. We're also looking at potentially seeing additional duties put in place on critical minerals because there is currently an investigation that is ongoing at the USTR into whether or not critical minerals are at risk from China. So we could see that before January 20th. And there's also the possibility that the the president will invoke the IESA, which is the the International Emergency Economic Powers Act, IEEPA, IESA, that would allow the president to take all kinds of different actions. Now, traditionally, we've not seen that authority used to impose tariffs, but that doesn't mean that this administration is not going to use it for that. It could be, but it just hasn't in the past. I think that there's some other Section 301 actions where we should watch because we might see some action. Well, number one, we know what's going to happen with respect to France, right? We did a Section 301 investigation into their to determining whether or not the digital services tax that they have put in place damaged or harmed US companies. And it was found that yes, it does. And so as a result, the Trump administration put together a list of products that they're going to impose tariffs. Now, those tariffs have been suspended until January the 6th of 2021. But it's very possible that those will be put in place much sooner than that because just this past week, France started issuing its invoices to the US companies to pay their taxes. But it's not just taxes they are right now. They're saying that they need to pay taxes that were suspended in April and October. So it's possible that the January 6th date might be moved up. So that's going to hit a lot of products coming in from France. And there are several food products on there which might impact some of you directly. Also, we have the pending Section 301 investigation on other countries who are either doing or about to impose digital services tax, including all on the EU countries. Specifically, other countries include Austria, Brazil, Czech Republic, India, Indonesia, Italy, Spain, Turkey, and the UK. So all of those, if there is an affirmative determination that the digital services tax inordinately impact US companies, we could see the administration recommend or that the USTR recommending that the president impose different tariffs on these products. That could still happen. That one, I think, might not happen because I'm not sure that it's advanced far enough along that we would be in a place to impose the tariffs. But listen, I don't put anything past the speed at which this administration can operate. I've seen them move very quickly when they need to. So we could see something coming in on imported products all across the board, foods, beverages, everything, prepared food, particularly coming in from Italy, from the EU. So we need to be prepared for that. I think another one we need to look at, I don't know if many of you import food products from Vietnam, but there is a pending, there are two pending Section 301 investigations on Vietnam. One is for allegations of undervaluing their currency. The other is for allegations of using illegally harvested timber. Now, either one of these could result in tariffs or, you know, could result in tariffs twice. So it's very possible that that could happen before January the 20th as well. So we need to be on the lookout for those. As I mentioned before, the Commerce Department is looking at adding more and more countries to its lists, the entities list, but it's not just Chinese. They're adding Venezuelan, Iranian, Russian, all over the place. So hopefully you all are importing from some of those those countries. So this may not impact you so much, but it's just something to be aware of. The ITA, again, it's doing anti-dumping, countervailing duty investigations, self-initiating them as well as self-initiating anti-circumvention. And those are on all products, I mean, pasta from Italy, tomatoes from from Italy as well. So there's lots of different products that they could try to self-initiate and get these started. And once you've got them started, the it's really, it has to follow the statute and it kind of proceeds regardless of who's in sitting in the president's chair. The other is, I mentioned the CBP using their power to investigate anti-circumvention. We expect to see more of that and not just on China and everything. Same thing with respect to issuing withhold withhold release orders. Now, this is a little bit different area. We've, again, going back, harken back to the Trade Facilitation and Trade Enforcement Act 2016. At that time, we saw that there was several changes to our laws. And one of them, of course, was the change to our tariff act of 1930. And in that instance, the there was a consumptive demand provision that had been in place for years for goods that may have been made with forced labor. And what it said was, there is a ban, a prohibition on the importation of any items that are made with forced labor unless there was a consumptive demand for it. And that provision was removed. So since 2016, Customs has used its authority to issue withhold release orders to stop goods at the border when they determine that a certain product is being imported under the suspicion of being made with forced labor. It's been interesting to see how many WROs they have issued because in the 19 years prior to 2016, only 37 WROs were issued. But since 2016, we've seen almost 30 WROs issued. The thing about this is that Customs is not limiting it just to, you know, a company importing a product or exporting a product. They're also issuing them blankets WROs. For example, they issued a blanket one on tobacco. Any product made of tobacco in whole or in part that was grown in Malawi. They did it with respect to cotton. You all may be aware that there is a lot of rumors out there that they're going to take some sort of WRO action because of allegations of forced labor on cocoa. That may impact many of you and your importations. And the problem is, there's no advance warning. It's just suddenly, one day, they issue it. If your goods arrive or if they're on the water, you're stuck, you're facing having your goods prevented from entering at that moment unless you can prove to Customs that the goods were made without any type of forced labor. And that can take a long time to do, so it doesn't always work well. The other one that some of you are probably very familiar with is the stevia withhold release order that was issued on China. Now, what's interesting is that's one of the findings. There was an, you kind of go from a withhold release order to Customs issuing a finding. If they issue a finding, it kind of takes it from a different place of not only are your goods prohibited from entry, but they can go after you for penalties and additional fines. And so there was recently a finding issued on stevia imports from China from certain companies. So you've got to be aware of what they're doing as well. And we anticipate that that might pick up between now and January the 20th. And then just, you know, mention again, the OFAC, the Office of Foreign Assets Control at Treasury Department, very likely to issue additional or add additional companies to the or entities to the specially designated nationals list, not just from China. And what about Commerce? What kind of mischief can Congress get into between now and January the 20th? Well, there's a pending bill that you may have heard about. It's the Weaver Forced Labor Act and it's HR 6210. It was passed overwhelmingly bipartisan in the House. It's pending in the Senate. There are a lot of companies who are not in favor of this bill or what it does simply because it has some SEC filing requirements that are pretty onerous. If any of you ever dealt with conflict mineral imports or anything that has conflict minerals in it, you know that there are requirements to disclose on your SEC filings whether or not you have any forced labor in your in your supply chain. This is that on steroids. So there's a lot of complaints about it. Not sure what's going to go. If it moves, it will move very quickly. It will move under unanimous consent, which means there's there's no objections. There's no debate and everybody just decides you're going to vote yea or nay. I voice vote and then it moves forward. Something else that we're looking at closely for Congress is the GSP and MTV. Now, this, I know, is very important to many of you. We have worked with AFI over the years in obtaining certain miscellaneous tariff bill provisions which suspends the duties or reduces them for at least three years. Well, those expire on December the 31st. So the MTV process has gone through and we've also filed for many, several petitions for AFI members to get some additional products put on that list. That bill is moving and it's very interesting because if you talk to the folks in the Senate, some of the Senate Republicans feel very confident they can move this between now and the end of the year. But when you talk to the House, they're really not focused on it at all. So it's not clear, you know, what's going to happen because it does have to originate in the House because it's a tariff measure and then go to the Senate. So we're kind of not not giving up hope, but maybe a 60/40 that it goes through. With respect to GSP, same type of issue. That expires on December the 31st. And we're looking at a bill that was introduced in the Senate that would extend it for 16 months. Again, in the Senate, they feel very bullish that they're going to be able to pass this and they can get it done before the end of the year. But we're not seeing the same kind of energy over in the House. So we're not sure exactly if they're going to be able to get those done, but they could get it done between now and the end of the year. The other thing to think about for Congress between now and the end of the year is that December the 10th in 10 days, well, December the 11th. So by December the 10th, we need to have a budget for the government. Can you continue it running? And our current continuing resolution runs out. So a lot of the oxygen is going to be consumed with addressing the continuing resolution or some other budget mechanism to keep the government open beyond December the 11th. And we're probably going to see a lot of effort exerted to do some sort of a stimulus bill, particularly in light of all the COVID closures and reclosures and tightening down of going out in public that's going on right now. So let's switch, let's look to Biden. What's a possible actions that the Biden administration might put into place? First, we have to remember that I believe that at least the first two years are refocused on COVID, on the economy, and on jobs. It's really going to be a domestic focus. I think there will only be an international focus to the extent of untangling some of the things that have been viewed as being tangled by the Trump administration. And I think that, you know, the Biden folks, you know, not the official appointees because they haven't appointed yet, obviously, but some of the spokespeople have said that President like Biden very much thinks that tariffs are an effective tool and is not going to be afraid to use tariffs. However, he believes that there needs to be more of a strategy and how they're used. So with that said, I don't believe that we're going to see a removal of the 301 tariffs at all. And some of you, if you have any products that are eligible for the exclusions, all, almost, almost all the exclusions expire December 31st. So just about everything's going to be subject to tariffs on January 1. The Biden administration is not going to immediately lift those immediately lift those tariffs. But what could they do? Well, one thing they can do is they could restart the exclusion process. So it's very possible that they might want to open up that process again to allow people to submit petitions to get an exclusion from the the tariffs. That might happen. Another thing that could happen is, some of you may be aware, there has been a court challenge that has been mounted against the administration. If you haven't participated in that, let me know. We'd be happy to help you and sign you up as the as one of the petitioners in this in these cases because the the challenge is that the administration has exceeded its statutory authority under Section 301 when they put the tariffs on Lists 3 and List 4A. Because the way the statute reads, you can do a Section 301 investigation and then you determine what the potential impact or negative impact on the US economy has been. And then you're able to retaliate or get yourself remunerated for that amount. Okay, that was determined to be 50 billion. Well, that was what was covered under Lists 1 and List 2. But then our, the president decided to impose additional tariffs on 200 billion and then on another 300 billion. So those two lists and those items that are subject to tariffs are in excess of the statutory authority. It's very possible that the Biden administration will not maybe argue as strongly as the Trump administration may have argued that those tariffs were righteous and that they should be there. And if the courts come back and say, you know what? We think that this was exceeding statutory authority, those tariffs should be lifted. It's very possible the Biden administration will say, oh, you're right, and they won't appeal it. At that point, they can absolve themselves of responsibility for removing tariffs on China. And they can say, well, we had to lift them because that's what the courts said. You know, so we kind of do what the courts say. So they wind up doing something good without appearing that they're being soft on China. Another potential is that on the statute, when you have imposed tariffs on section, under Section 301, you have to review them every four years. So that review is coming up in August for the items on List 1. The items on List 2, it's not until September of 2022. So I don't know how they might maneuver it. But what they might do is they might do the review of all of them when they do the review in August of next year. And at that point, they could determine tariffs are no longer needed and remove them. So we're we're seeing that that's probably going to be some of the options that they consider. The other thing we believe they're going to do is a multilateral, multilateral approach to China. In other words, try to get our allies to take the same positions that we are with respect to technology, with respect to intellectual property, with respect to 5G technology, et cetera. And it's possible that we may see some removal of the tariffs on steel and aluminum from some of our allies, maybe from some of our FTA partners. And it could be that the Biden administration uses the removal of those tariffs as leverage, if they need to, to get the our allies and partners in line with us to to try to address the problems of overproduction of steel, overproduction of aluminum, and in dealing with China. So it's very possible that that might be used as a as a carrot to try to entice the other countries to help bolster our position. I don't see much change with respect to the other government agencies that I mentioned under the in the Trump administration, the OFAC, the BIS, the CBP, simply because they are really taking action pursuant to legislation that Congress passed. So it's that legislation has been there. What the difference is, is that the Trump administration really accelerated and put pressure on those agencies to take that action. And so we may see a continuance of that because I kind of feel like the Biden administration might try to out-Trump Trump and take more aggressive action, particularly on forced labor issues, as well as maybe using environmental reasons as substantiation for why they should be taking certain actions or putting certain entities on different lists. So, you know, we could see the Biden administration actually picks their lead from the Trump administration and takes it one step further. I will have to say though, you know, the Trump administration in all my years of doing this three decades, right? I think has had the most coordinated governmental approach in their the strategy or in their their approach to China. They've pulled the State Department in line, the Commerce Department, the Treasury Department, DHS. They really aligned all of these. They, you know, they got the Department of Labor to issue the TVPRA list. All of that came out and they're really focused on addressing China. I've honestly not seen a government act as effectively. And I always complain about that, how the Chinese always seem to be very organized across government agencies when they approached the US negotiations. When I was a negotiator, the coordination was amazing. And I felt like in the US, we were siloed. Everybody had their own little lane and they stayed in it. But I feel like the Trump administration really pulled everybody in line and they said, hey, this is what we're going to do. Tell me how you're going to do it and how you're going to contribute. So I do give kudos for for that approach. And and, you know, maybe then we're going to see that continuation of that. As I said, I don't see any changes in the other government agencies' approach on some of these issues because they are mandated by Congress. With respect to the FTA negotiations, as you know, the Trump administration initiated them with respect to the EU. I think that we might not see an FTA negotiation, but I think we might see a mini deal. And that mini deal might include the removal of tariffs by both parties under the Airbus Boeing dispute, maybe removal of the 232 tariffs, potential removal of the digital services tariffs, taxes. So that might be some sort of a mini deal that's worked out. They also might continue what the Obama administration had been doing, which was really working towards regulatory coherence, making it so that if you met certain standards in the United States, they would be accepted going into the EU and vice versa. So you didn't have to retest everything or get a new, like a new FDA or approval or whatever it is you had to do. So they might be working on that. With respect to the UK, I think that they will work on those immediately when they come in office. However, I don't see a way, I just don't see a possibility of that getting concluded in time to be considered under the Trade Promotion Authorities Act, the TPA, which is gives the president the authority to negotiate and then Congress does a straight yes or no vote. Because that would have to be done by April and there's just no way. I mean, the first three months of a new administration, they're they're rearranging the deck chairs. So it's not, I just don't see that happening. With respect to Kenya, I don't see that happening. I don't see that happening in time to be considered under the current TPA as well. I do think those negotiations are going to continue. I think they might change a little bit in approach and strategy just because of the way that the the Obama administration had dealt with developing nations. So I think that might be a little bit different. One question I get a lot is, what about the TPP? Do you think we'll get back into the TPP? Honestly, I think we couldn't be looking at it again, particularly in light of the RCEP. That was the Regional Economic, the Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership that includes a whole group of countries and China and Australia and everybody. So as a sort of a counterweight to that, we could see negotiations under the TPP. If we do, look to look to it to be more similar to the USMCA with respect particularly to the labor provisions. And I think we could see even stronger environmental provisions. Now, what about the 117th Congress? January 3rd is whenever we have a new Congress. What are we going to see them do? I think if we didn't get the MTV done and the GSP done, that's going to be one of the first items, at least in the first quarter of the new Congress that I think they're going to try to move forward. I think that we're going to see potentially legislation that would reassert Congress's authority over some of the different trade provisions, Section 232, Section 301, the IESA. Because the members of Congress were not pleased with the lack of consultation that they felt that they were given whenever actions were taken by the Trump administration. And since, you know, governance over tariffs rests constitutionally with Congress and it was only these special sections that provisions that gave that authority to the president, they may try to rest some of that and pull it back. So we could see some of that legislation going forward. And we may see the Trade Promotion Authority because that expires at the end of June of 2021. And if we want to see additional free trade agreements, I can see Congress, you know, wanting to move that forward. I don't think the Biden administration is going to ask for TPA. I think if it happens, it's going to be done by the Congress. And if Congress doesn't, I think there's going to be even more stringent provisions on labor, more stringent provisions on environment. And we could see a whole lot more consultation requirements. Again, because the Congress was frustrated with the Trump administration because of the mini deals that were done, the mini deal with China, the mini deal with Japan. And they felt that was circumventing their authority and what should be done under the trade agreements. So with that, you know, I think that I'll I'll stop here and open this up for questions. There's a lot to look at, a lot could happen. So we just need to be ready and be prepared. Thanks. I'll take your questions.
Thank you very much, Nicole, for that presentation. So you're right, it is a lot to cover and a lot to think about in this particular moment in time. I'm looking now to see if we have any questions. If you have a question, you can put it in the chat and I can ask her directly or you can also raise your hand and ask Nicole a question live. Nicole, are you there? Can you hear me?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for being here and really thanks for all of that. I'm sure just in the few days since you recorded it, you probably do have things you heard that have already shifted or maybe become a little bit more clear just in a couple of days.
Yes, um, actually, I'll give you an update with respect to the MTV because I know that that's a big concern for several of your members. There is a, it is moving in again now in the House. We are seeing a return of interest and actually trying to get it to move forward. But what we're seeing is several members are coming forward and objecting to some of the provisions that are in there. It's a bit frustrating because, you know, the the MTV process was moved out of Congress and put over to the ITC. And the reason they did that was to try to take the politics out of this process to give it a fair, unbiased economic evaluation. That was the whole goal of moving it so that what came to Congress would have been something that was fully vetted, that the ITC determined was not going to damage US domestic industry, had not found manufacturers who competed with the product and which were valued under $500,000. And then bring that to Congress. But what we're seeing is a lot of cherry picking going on. And one of the concerns that's really worrying me, and I actually was on phone calls about it this morning, is there's this pressure to remove any finished products from that list and trying to say that the only products that should be allowed in under the MTV are inputs. Now, as you know, what we're talking about are finished products. So we haven't seen, at least I'm not aware of yet, anyone objecting to some of the AFI petitions, but they are objecting to others. What that could result in is tanking the whole bill. What would hap, what could happen is those people who had put those provisions in may then turn around and say, you know what? If we're not going to do this the right way, we're going to oppose it overall. So I'm just not sure the how that's going to move forward. The other thing is on GSP. On GSP, we saw, I mentioned a bill that had been introduced in the Senate to extend it for 16 months. We've now seen a bill introduced We've now seen a bill introduced in the House that would extend it for six months. But the bill in the House also has some significant revisions to the eligibility criteria. So it's really, it's not just an extension, it's a reformation of some of the provisions. I don't know, again, if there's going to be time to consider moving that forward. The one good thing that we have always seen with respect to the GSP is when it has expired and it is eventually renewed, they've given retroactive treatment back to the date of expiration. They've never done that on MTBs unfortunately, but they have done that with respect to GSP. So those are the two, two items that I definitely wanted to, to update you guys on with respect to legislation that's moving.
All right, very good. Thank you, Nicole. I see a couple of questions in the chat and then I'll go to the ones that have been emailed to me directly. What do you expect between now and January 20th with regard to 25% tariffs in the Boeing Airbus dispute?
I see that those tariffs are, I don't think that they're going to be carouselled. I don't think that they're going to be increased, but I do believe that they're going to remain in effect. As you know, there's a, there's a lot of pressure by the, this, the outgoing administration to impose a lot of tariffs. I, some people have surmised it's just, you know, an effort to try to create chaos before the next administration. I don't necessarily think that that's the truth. I think that could be part of it, but I also think that, that President Trump has sort of laid down a marker as one of his legacy items is that he did take a tough stance, that he did impose tariffs on trading partners who he felt were not playing fair and has called himself Tariff Man. And so I think this is part of his outgoing legacy to say, look, I was tough. I was as tough as I could be and I didn't show any favorites, whether it was the EU and, you know, our good friends over there, or whether it was China. I was the person who put these measures in place. So, you know, I, I don't see a whole lot of change between now and, and January 20th.
Okay, so thank you. Here's another question for you. Any thoughts on whether GSP and MTB would be retroactive if not passed until next year?
Right, with respect to GSP, as I mentioned, they, historically, when it has expired, they have put in a measure to make it retroactive. It's a very simple, you know, mechanism whenever you're making an entry because you put in a special indicator on your entry when you make it and customs can quickly, you know, run the data and decide and determine which items should be refunded. But with respect to MTB, I've just never seen them really go back retroactively for any, for any of the items. So with the MTB, I would expect and anticipate that those tariffs will expire. Maybe, you know, again, I, I just never know exactly what they're going to do or what might just pop out at the very last minute. At this point, you know, again, updating from when I spoke before today is the, the 10th. And there is likely to be a continuing resolution that'll fund the government through next Friday. So what that means is we've still got another seven days where Congress is going to be in session. So that gives us more time to try to move these bills forward. So they might move forward. However, if the MTB does not move forward, I would, I would advise that you need to expect to pay tariffs at least until such time as the, the MTB might move in the 117th Congress next year. And I would not expect, I wouldn't put in my books getting a refund. So I would write that down as a cost and I would not expect to get those tariffs back.
Understood. Okay, here's another question. There's a couple more coming in too.
Fine.
Do you feel there was any rhyme or reason to the exclusion process? And, and again, would anything change under Biden?
So this is Nicole's personal opinion, all right? So let's not say that this is Sandler and Travis's opinion, but this is Nicole's personal opinion. When the, when the exclusion process was put in place, it was an absolute mess. And that's the nicest word I can find to describe it. USTR is not an agency that is set up to implement policy. USTR is a policymaking institution. I used to work at USTR. I know the difference. And what they tried to do was to take control of implementing governing and, and putting in place this, this, this process, which is not their role. They brought in people who had no experience in classification, who had no experience in the domestic industry. They just were throwing people at it. I was solicited to come in and try to work with them. They wanted to give me a three-year contract to manage this. I'm like, yeah, no, I'm not doing it. So, and I know several of the people that they brought in. And I mean, one of the young people that they brought in was a former intern here and because she had worked here and she was an intern for three months, that's what qualified her to be someone who knows about trade. So you've got to think that what they were putting in there is not, it, it was, it was clearly, I don't think they anticipated the depth of knowledge that they needed to implement this. And we found this because many times they would put something out there and saying that this is going to be duty-free, but they had the classification for one product and a written description for another one. I'm like, did you guys even look at this? So I thought it was an absolute mess. Now, will that change under the Biden administration? Maybe. I can tell you that we are actually working with some companies. And again, so if you guys are interested, please talk to Cherry Horn or talk to myself afterwards. But we're working with some companies to advocate in Congress and then to educate and advocate with an incoming Biden administration to do a couple of things. One would be first, to see if we can extend exclusions that are about to expire. And then the other is to try to restart the exclusion process and potentially reform it. Under the reform, what we've, we've talked to with some members of Congress is they would like to see it moved from USTR to the ITC. The ITC is, as I mentioned before, does the miscellaneous tariff bill. The miscellaneous tariff bill has gone a thorough vetting. It looks at all of the, you know, domestic industry. It has a good, the ITC is an economic analysis office. That's why it was set up. It's nonpartisan. It looks at the data and the facts. It would be great to have them in there. They also understand classification. They understand how customs can enforce it. It would be so much better to have it there. So it might shift from the USTR to the ITC. It could be renewed and we are advocating for that type of process.
Okay, thank you. Here's another. If you could speak briefly again on the Boeing Airbus dispute as it relates to food items from Europe. In your view, is there any possible reductions to the punitive tariff rates?
So I think under the Biden administration, not under the Trump administration. So nothing, I would say, I would not expect anything until first quarter, any movement until maybe first quarter 2021. And it might not result in actual change until second quarter 2021 for your planning purposes. But my expectation is that in the first quarter 2021, the Biden administration is going to meet with these allies, including the EU especially, and try to address it. They want to figure out, is there a way for us to work out the digital services tax? Is there a way for us to work out the steel and aluminum? Is there a way for us to work out the Airbus? That's why I was talking about that mini deal. So I think that it's possible that it may not, that the engagement initially with the EU may not be towards FTA, but may be more to deal with some of these outstanding issues and try to resolve them. So it is possible that if there is some sort of a coordinated effort, that they might be able to get those tariffs removed. Again, if I were looking at, you know, my, my planning purposes and trying to predict out when I'm going to be tariffs, paying my tariffs and how long I'm going to be paying them, I would probably look at 2021 as having to pay those tariffs at least through the second quarter of 2021. And I might revise that, but that's, if you ask me today, that would be what my advice would be.
Okay, I think that is all of the questions we have today. I have to thank you, Nicole. We certainly brought the right person in for this topic. You are extremely well-versed and experienced. Your information is literally up to the minute. And, and we sincerely appreciate you sharing with us today. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
And when we can meet in person.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to turn it over to Bob Bauer now for an AFI segment and then we'll come back for our next speaker. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank Nicole again. She's been making presentations for AFI since, I think it was, might be 2003-ish when we had our convention in Puerto Rico. First time we met Nicole and she's been a terrific resource ever since. And I did want to point out very quickly for the members that they realize the, the, one of the benefits of AFI membership is that you receive from Sandler Travis from Rosenberg, the daily newsletter that the firm puts out. So, um, filled with a lot, a lot of good information. I know I rely on it for a lot of information as well. We update the, the list that we provide to them on a regular basis. So if you're not getting that, please send an email to info@afius.org. And we'll make sure that you start getting that. But again, as Erin said, Nicole's a, you could see, I mean, having to talk very quickly to get everything crammed in that she did in her timeframe. One thing we didn't get, I follow her on Twitter, by the way. We didn't get to hear her thoughts on breakdancing being added as an Olympic sport. She had some comments on, on that. I, I get a kick out of following her, her items on Twitter on a number of things, not only trade related. So thank you again, Nicole, and Erin will put it right back to you.
Okay, thanks again. Thank you, Bob. Our next segment is on transportation and logistics, both internationally and domestically. We have two speakers joining us, Paul Jekka and Greg Mermanzo. And after the two speakers, we'll have a joint session of questions and answers. Again, you can pose your questions in the chat room. You can raise your hand if you want to interact personally. But our first speaker will be Paul Jekka. Paul joined Always Forwarding in 1989. Since that time, he's been a strong associate member and supporter of AFI and also the Cheese Importers Association. He likes to, he currently serves as the Vice President for Always Forwarding and will share his most recent information on the international trade environment as he is an international man of mystery. Paul Jekka.
I'd like to welcome everyone to my presentation today. My name is Paul Jekka, Vice President of Always Forwarding International. I'm going to talk a little bit about the challenges of international trade in 2021 and beyond. This will be more of a discussion rather than a presentation because the situation is so fluid. There are many things going on. Like to thank Bob Bauer and, and Erin and Ed for helping arrange this in the Association of Food Industries. So without delay, I'll get started. This will be in two sections. Section one, we'll cover the trade challenges. We'll talk about those a little bit. And then section two will be the US foreign shipping challenges and port capacity issues. Here the topics we'll be going over in section one, the section 301 duties. Of course, the Airbus dispute. The EU Boeing ruling. And currency manipulation and that, that, that affects things globally. Well, let's talk about the timeline for the section 301 duties. There's no expected review until the mandatory review date of 2/12/21. And of course, this is just scratching the surface, but the timeline will be very slow in my opinion. And then there will be an open comment period for 30 days. And then prepare for another 180 days after that, back to 8/11/2021. The new administration will be very raw at this point. And things will remain status quo until the new administration resolves the public health issues as a top priority. The public health decisions and the resolution of a few promises by the new administration during the election period, such as more enhanced stimulus package will be a top priority. So that, that, that's going to delay things for sure. And then you, you come into the Airbus dispute. And of course, that brings into the, the mix who's going to be appointed the new USTR and how long that process of confirmation will take. Of course, Joe Biden's no stranger to the section 301 duties. And it's been, the Airbus dispute's been going on during his administration previously with, with Obama. So, you know, he's no stranger to that. And there's several people in the running for the new USTR position. And you know, Rahm Emanuel, Jimmy Gomez, Catherine Tai, these are all people, their names are in the mix, but the frontrunner is yet to be determined on that department. And Biden is keen on appointing women in his staff. So we're going to see that play out. But again, how soon will these decisions be made and suspension of the 301 duties, et cetera? I don't, I don't see that happening any, anytime soon. Biden still has long-lasting allies in the EU from his previous administration. So that will, of course, affect the timeline and, and his negotiations. Okay, so this all means it's complicated and subject to further negotiation, which we all know that President Biden will play his cards a long way. He's not going to, he's not going to be sending out a, a tweet to, to provide these decisions to, or, or announce these decisions actually. Now we get into the EU Boeing ruling. Now that can be leveraged for the EU for sure. And it will be negotiated. It's going to be a part of, it's going to be on the table with with the Airbus disputes going back and forth. It's, it, the pressure on both sides makes the forecast very foggy. And also the timeline is very difficult because you have the inauguration taking place and then the February 12th timeline, which is a Friday at 2021, right after the inauguration, a few weeks after that. So there, there's, they're not going to be in any hurry to, to be making decisions in this area. And it's very difficult to untangle the two WTO rulings, very difficult. Of course, then you have the, the French digital service tax that could come into play at any time. And our friend, China and Vietnam, ongoing investigations since 2015 regarding currency manipulation. That also puts global pressure on the folks out there that want to purchase things from China and Vietnam and the foodstuffs area. Certainly adds difficulty to the mix. We're going to roll into US and foreign shipping and port capacity. Of course, we all are experiencing port congestion. Of course, vessel space availability, you know, you're talking to your freight forwarder and your shipping agents and even your factories. And you're saying, hey, when is this order going to ship? And they load the container and the container leaves the factory on time and gets to the port and is, oh, maybe to miss that vessel, it's rolled on to the next vessel and sometimes even rolled on again to another vessel. And of course, that puts pressure on the ports here in the United States. Everybody wants their cargo, but you know, the, the, the delays and sometimes you know, the, the delays and sometimes you even have bills of late in cut. And so you, you know, you're at home thinking, hey, this is great. My container is on the water already and we're moving. Oh, no, it didn't make that vessel. Have to change it up. And then, you know, so the ETAs are all messed up. ETAs change frequently. The steamship lines are slow or remiss at giving accurate information in some cases. And the rates, of course, are increasing because of demand. And in the past, you would be able to say, hey, you know, I'll give you an extra X amount of dollars if you put me on a priority on a vessel. Doesn't matter at this point. The numbers are through the roof and they're just going to keep climbing and you're lucky if you can get on a, on a vessel. There's peer labor shortages and equipment shortages. Some of the reasons why are well, back when COVID started, which I really didn't want to mention much of during this presentation because we've all heard enough about it, but since COVID started, peer labor shortages were created because many of the peers laid off or furloughed to their workers. And some of those furloughed workers immediately found work elsewhere. And when the peers called them back, they weren't available. They were no longer available. And then there's equipment shortages as a result of the depression in some of the shipping trade lanes. And it takes 30 days for those trade lanes to be replenished and the equipment to be replenished. So there's a lag there from the container storage facilities. Then there's our friend, the vessel diversions. Vessel diversions are as a result of other, of the original, the original peer being overloaded or taking too long for a big, large vessel to offload. These large vessels can take 24 to 36 hours to be offloaded because there's so many containers coming off of them. So often a steamship line that has a deal with a peer, let's say APM terminals or MAR. Suddenly they find themselves being turned away or waiting to ask to wait in the harbor. And they divert to another port such as New York Container Terminal. Now what happens there is well, the exchange for the chassis comes out of MAR terminal, but the container is over at your container terminal. So the trucker has to go to MAR and then has to go across to New York and then the reverse when they're delivering the container back and then they have to bring the the chassis back over to me to MAR. It's, it's a challenge. And all these extra costs are passed along to the importer with little or no warning. And that's, that's the logistics cost of the trucking. And here's a little bit about my contact information and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Paul. That, as I've mentioned, is part one of our transportation and logistics segment. We'll go to our second speaker and then have a joint session of questions and answers. If you want to continue to put your questions in the chat room. And I can ask them or you can also raise your hand. So our next speaker, part two of this segment is Greg Ramonzo. Greg's a partner at Sun Tech TTS and that is Mode's top brokerage agency. Sun Tech Transport Group has 140 on staff with locations in New York, Boston and Jacksonville. Sun Tech TTS and Mode Transport merged in December of 2019 to form one of North America's largest freight brokerage platforms with sales approaching $2.5 billion. Greg lives in Wyckoff, New Jersey with his wife Cindy and three children. He's a graduate of the University of Georgia and he joins us today to share his expertise in managing domestic logistics. So introducing Greg Ramonzo.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greg Ramonzo and I run the New Jersey office for Sun Tech TTS here in Rochelle Park in Jersey. I'm very fortunate to share a couple of minutes with you all today and I hope to provide you some insight as to what I see coming for us in 2021 in the logistics market. But before I begin, I figure I'd tell you a little bit about myself. Normally in these meetings, we'd be in person shaking hands and saying hello. I'm a proud graduate of the University of Georgia. I've been in the logistics business all my career, approaching 20 years. My body reminds me every morning when I wake up how old I am. I have three beautiful kids and a wife who live in Wyckoff, New Jersey. And in my spare time, I love playing golf, playing music and eating too much. So a little bit about the world of logistics company and what we call freight brokerage. Our job every day is to make connections, connecting shippers and carriers to help keep your product moving and to keep trucks moving on the road to get them back to their home states or their home cities. What you'll see is a picture of our office above a couple of years ago and below, you'll see a picture of it today, sitting empty. I know that these are crazy times for all of us. I hope that you and your loved ones are doing well and are healthy. Fortunately for us, the shipping world keeps on moving despite all of our people being home. I figure I'll give you a quick overview of some themes that we bump into every day in our marketplace. The first and one of the most important pieces is that this, this is an incredibly fragmented business. There are over 3 million trucks on the road and there are 200 to 300,000 trucking companies are hired in the United States. When you balance that against the need of a couple hundred thousand decision makers in the space, you are left with a very fragmented business market. In part of that fragmentation, but also due to the fact that many are small companies, this is a technologically diverse industry. It's been very hard for technology providers and companies trying to make a splash in the space to really feel an impact throughout the entire industry. Also, it's an industry that's dominated by cycles that go up and down. Sometimes shocks are on the supply side and sometimes they're on the demand side. Obviously during these pandemic times, we've seen shocks to both supply as we can't find toilet paper and to demand as consumers are at home and not spending money in restaurants or perhaps even spending more money in furniture and cars and whatnot. The logistics and transportation industry is a space that's dominated by companies with poor operating ratios. What that means is that even when times are good, they don't make that much money. But as soon as there's a headwind, we find many companies are closing their doors and going out of business. When we think about freight flows throughout the United States, one key concept is the idea of contractual freight versus spot freight. And this is an important concept to be aware of. When you think about contract rate, think about a company like Kellogg's or Walmart that may move hundreds, hundreds of thousands of truckloads every year. In contrast, think of a small or midsize company, possibly a food importer like yourself that has just a few loads every year. You're going to come into the marketplace as you need to find capacity and get your shipments moved. So these are two different types of shipments that a company like myself encounters throughout the year. Contract is, business is normally handled through an annual bid where a spot market business is, is determined on the day that it is shipped. And finally, we're an industry full of M and A activity. There's been tremendous consolidation. Some companies run by baby boomers that are looking to turn the keys over to the next generation as well as tons of venture capital and private equity money coming into the space. So there's been a lot of name changes and a lot of turnover and new entrances to the space. So when we take a look at what's happened here in 2020, and again, I know it's been a tough and challenging year for us all personally and possibly for some in the business world as well. It's been a very dramatic year in the transportation business. This enclosed graph is the outbound tender reject index run by a company called FreightWaits. And this graph serves truly as a proxy for demand in the shipping business. What the curve actually represents are the number of loads that are rejected in a contractual environment. And then those loads then spill over into the spot market. The contractual market is many times larger than the spot market. Thus, if you think about water overflowing in a cup, it spills over into the spot market and really makes a massive impact. So when you pay close attention to March and April, you see the immediate impacts of the pandemic. First, the buying spree in the grocery stores and then as everyone sequesters themselves and stays locked down in the spring, you'll see a sudden slowdown in volumes and demand. However, as the summer months come, people begin to move out and about again and start spending their money. And you also can see the impacts of the unemployment and stimulus bills that came through our country. And all these factors together have made a profound impact on the demand for shipping. As you can see, based on this graph, we currently sit here at the end of the year at a point where we're experiencing demand that we haven't seen in many years. As you can imagine, this has had a profound impact on pricing as well. And so pricing is at all time highs despite diesel fuel not being that expensive historically speaking. So as 2020 comes to a close, you know, we wonder where does this leave us? What does 2021 look like? And I bumped into this interesting chart, reading an article online and I wanted to share it with you. And in the conventional wisdom, many months ago, talked about a V-shaped recovery and and this makes the argument that no, we're really going to be facing a W-shaped recovery or possibly many Ws in this, in this recovery. As we look, I think we again find ourselves at point two where we're on the rebound. And again, as at the time of this recording, we're experiencing a surge in cases again. We may very well go into position three, we'll go back into lockdowns and some economic distress. But eventually at the end of the pandemic, right, we find ourselves returning back to some sense of normalcy and hopefully some brighter, brighter pastures for our economy. So what does 2021 look like in the logistics world? Well, I'm going to give you two predictions that I have. And the first is that 2021 is still going to be caught up in pandemic paranoia. The logistics industry has been chasing its tail as trade and traffic patterns have been in balance. This makes for expensive and inefficient, inefficient movement of our national fleet. We expect to see a surge in contract pricing, right? Earlier, we spoke about contract pricing being much larger than, a much larger pool of business than spot pricing. So this will spill over into the spot world. Shippers will seek to stabilize their world as 2020 was a large headache for them, just trying to get their massive quantities freight moved every year. And then we wonder, as we see a change in Washington DC, will we finally get another stimulus package passed? If we do, I expect that the first quarter or two of our year will be salvaged. However, like a sugar high, we'll wake up in the second half with a bit of a hangover. Trucking capacity will come roaring back. Manufacturers and truck buyers have been purchasing trucks at record paces. As those trucks leave the factory floor and hit the road, it may be a little late to the party as there's not enough freight left on the roads. That will lead potentially to an oversupply of trucking capacity, which may then bring rates down. What I fear though, is that towards the end of the year, we'll be back to our new normal of that 1% economic growth. And we'll be faced with the similar topics again of manufacturing jobs being gone and not a lot of goods to move. Now I'd like to take a look at certain segments in the business for you from my perspective and I can give you a little bit more specific insights of what we can expect. The truckload market, as discussed earlier, has seen its ups and downs here in 2020. And as we look to 2021, we expect the tight truckload capacity to continue for the first half of the year. Again, I just referenced the overproduction of vehicles. There's also the reemergence of this driver shortage issue. It just is a position that Americans don't, don't want to undertake as a career and trucking companies continually look to pay more and offer better, better benefits to find quality drivers behind the wheel. Key term is quality as unqualified drivers are more expensive to insure and cause more illegal headaches for carriers. And finally, just like gravity, what goes up must come down. And we expect this environment and high truckload prices to begin to subside as the second half of the year is upon us. When we focus on the LTL world, again, this has been another segment of the market that has been under quite a bit of turmoil and stress. The market has been overcapacity for many months. In combination with the greater industrial output and consumers buying more durable goods, there's been a large shift in retail towards e-commerce. This spills over into LTL more than many other segments in our business. This will stay hot in 2021. As we all know, brick and mortar retail is disappearing in front of our eyes. I expect carriers to seek significant price increases in quarter one and quarter two as the 2020 holiday season comes to a close. And my question is, I know that we've all had some, some service failures and some problems managing these carriers in 2020. Do you think that their service track record will leave a black eye as we look forward? Possibly new entrants may come into the marketplace or new solutions to try to circumvent this troubled segment of the business. When I look to drag in pure operations here throughout the United States, again, same theme, 2020 has been a year full of headaches in a very busy environment. The big question is, how long will the current backlog of containers last at the peers? The one thing that you can do is look at the chart that's enclosed. This is the US Customs Maritime Import Shipment Tracker. And you'll see that I've drawn an average line from, from over the last 12 months of where we were 12 months ago to where we are today. And you'll see that steady average increase of volume coming into the US. The question is, does this slow down as we come into 2021? If it does, then you can expect better and more efficient operation at the peers. Currently, they're in a state of panic as there's too many containers to process as these massive vessels call, one after another call on each port. I'll ask the question, are there more regulatory headwinds looming? If you pay attention, in California, there have been bills regarding the classification of independent contractors. That issue hits home to the trucking business as the peers are serviced primarily by independent contractors running under the flag of a larger company. If that business model is threatened, you can expect higher prices and poor service to be the result of any, any regulation that comes through. Also as well, I would expect as things potentially slow down in the second half of the year for us to hear more about labor union unrest and how the labor unions are grappling with technology coming to port operations. Many of the technological advances around the ports mean less possible jobs as the human worker is being replaced by technology and software. The intermodal industry has also had quite a tumultuous 2020. Part of this is based on the, based on the endeavor of the railroads to become leaner, smaller entities. What this means is that they have cut back service in many markets as they, as they strive to be more efficient and more time sensitive on their railroad movements. This is a term called precision railroading. What this really means is when our economy gets busy, as we've seen in 2020, is that they're just truly not capable of handling the heavier volumes. I expect to see pricing plummeting in quarter one as the post-holiday demand wears off. As many of you have probably seen, pricing in the intermodal world has hit records here in Q3 and Q4 of 2020. Once the intermodal world returns to normal, we we can expect more service cuts in smaller and mid-sized marketplaces as the railroads look to edge out inefficient and low-volume areas. And then finally, they'll get back on track of becoming a more irrelevant part of the supply chain across the United States. These smaller companies simply just can't support the demand of what our country needs to get the move, the consumer. And last but not least, the warehousing world. I know many of you, as you import your items and bring them in and bringing them in, US have battled this for many years. What I've seen in, as we look at the real estate side of it, is that there's been a tremendous amount of building and refurbishment of spaces. But I don't see this issue coming into play in 2021. I see that a couple of years out is an issue of too much capacity and oversupply of warehouse space, which may lead to depressed warehouse prices down the road. However, here in 2021, it's all about location as warehousing that is located close to busy ports up and down the east and west coast will continue to increase in pricing and be scarce in supply. But I will warn you to be cautious with new entrants into the spaces. We've seen a lot of building around the southeastern ports especially as they take market share away from the northeast ports and the west coast ports. Many of these new entrants aren't efficient and are still new companies trying to figure out how to operate in the best way possible. This may mean poor service for their customers and a lack of attention to detail that we find in some of the best-run companies. So that in sum is what I see in 2021. I hope that it's a year that brings greater prosperity, certainty, and health to all of us out there. I also just want to say that I, our office will be celebrating 17 years of service this April. And I just wanted to thank all of our partners with AFI for your continued patronage and support of Suntech TTS. You guys are an important part of our business and we really appreciate working with you. So thanks for your time and look forward to any questions in the next section.
Thank you, Greg and Paul. I believe we have them both. Do we have you both here live with us today for questions?
Yep.
Paul, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. We already have quite a few questions for you both. I'll pose the question and you can decide amongst yourselves who answers it first or who it's more geared for, okay? The first one is, do you think the current port congestion in LA is due to a Christmas rush? Or will it continue well into 2021?
Well, this is Paul Jekka. Greg, I think we both can answer this, but I'll chime in first. I think it's going to continue well into 2021 based on the current volumes and the forecasts that I'm seeing from my clients. Greg, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I think the million dollar question is, when does it end, though? You know, I think the result is it is a kind of collision of the holiday shipping pattern with our American consumer. Again, like I said before, having more disposable income to buy stuff, right? Because they're not traveling, they're not going out and about and spending on services. So I personally do see it, you know, winding down at some point. It's just hard to put your finger on it. But, you know, if we look at previous years, you know, we always also have to look at Chinese New Years often being a, you know, a point on the calendar where, you know, we see, you know, we see a slowdown just before and then just after as the holiday season from before winds down. So, you know, if I had to, if I had to put a number on it, I would say, you know, eight to 10 weeks out and I would expect to see some different conditions, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so definitely through the, definitely through the first quarter of 2021 and then it's a question mark.
Okay, well, that's the Los Angeles port. Can you comment on the status of the Baltimore port?
That's a very good question. Baltimore and New York are tightly related. I would say, I would say, I would say for the major east and west coast ports, it would all apply.
Okay, I am going to go to the next one here for both of you. Importers don't seem to have any leverage with the ports and rails. If containers are held for various reasons, they hold the importer responsible for demurrage, knowing that they can just refuse to release. Are there any suggestions for this problem?
Well, Greg, I'm sure you'll have some input on this as well. I know there's some cases going on with the FMC right now and some pressure on the lines to provide a little bit of relief there with suspension of demurrage and suspension of chassis charges, et cetera. With very limited success, however, that play, that's still in play. And you're, you know, you're at the mercy of the lines in many of these cases. Greg, do you have any input on that?
I would say from a trucker's point of view, we're just as hostage to the situation as the importer is. If anything, you may be one step higher on the food chain just because you're likely a direct customer of either an NVO CC or the steamship itself where, you know, they may actually answer your call and listen. But yeah, from the carrier's point of view, we're, you know, just along for the ride and, you know, have very little, you know, control or influence over the situation. I've seen the same articles, you know, referencing, you know, a real pushback against them. And I just, you know, you know, we see some of the same circumstances in the LTL business. I would say any business that really is truly an oligarchy, like the Oceanside is, you know, those carriers tend to, you know, not be too great at customer service, right? Because they know that, you know, they're the ones holding cards and there aren't too many other options. So it turns into a frustrating process for all of us.
Absolutely. And we're constantly, from a customs brokerage and freight for order standpoint, having to support the importers and the truckers by guaranteeing demurrage charges after a trucker's been turned away, storage charges, and also equipment availability issues. So it's a very difficult position and it puts us in a very tight spot as well. Because, hey, you know, your importer says, hey, I don't care. I want my container, get it off the pier, you know, at all costs. You know, you have to do it and it has to be done today. I don't want to run into another day of demurrage. So of course, we go ahead and guarantee all the demurrage charges and everything and send an invoice out to the importer. And a month later, hey, what's this bill for? We didn't authorize this. This is a, you know, this, we're not paying this. And hey, wait a minute, you know, we're all in this boat together and, you know, we have to send them shipping notes and do all the back tracing and our accounting department has to get involved. It's a very complicated mix and, you know, and it's due to many reasons, but equipment availability. And then you have a shortage of skilled labor and available chassis and things of that nature that are all putting pressure on the ports and the peers. And I'm sure if we talk to our friends down at Mar terminal and other terminals, they'll, from a management and upper level view, they will concur.
I think I could just add on to what Paul said by, you know, a little bit of context of, if you think about, you know, many in the food importing business, these are family-run companies that have been doing this for generations. You know, drive up and down I-95 and take a look at how many, you know, especially maybe in the Carolinas, how many closed manufacturing facilities there are. And just remember that 10, 15, 20 years ago, so much more of our durable goods and consumable goods were manufactured or assembled in the US and that's not the case anymore. So in the context of having all these problems and there being this extreme pressure in and around the ports and these gateways, they're, they were a fraction of the size 10 to 15 years ago. And so it's still relatively new infrastructure, you know, new to handling this amount of freight and this amount of containers. And, you know, I think when you take a step back and think of it that way, it's not surprising that we're, we run into so many problems when it does get busy at certain times of the year.
That makes sense. And I think during that discussion, you answered a couple of other questions that I saw come in during that time. So thank you for that. Here's another one for both of you. Do you think the trucking industry in general has added the technology needed to comply with the transportation rule? For example, the temperature control records?
Well, I referenced, you know, there's a, you know, a real firewall almost to getting technology through. I'll give you an example in my business. I have the capability of, you know, somewhat new to the marketplace within a couple of years of cell phone tracking every driver automatically through our system. That didn't exist, I don't know, say, you know, four or five years ago. But the problem we run into are two things is some drivers still have flip phones that can't be tracked through that technology. The other piece is that they just choose to, choose to not be, you know, tracked from a privacy point of view or to not be bothered with habits. So that's just, you know, one in a go, you know, example. But it's kind of seems to be the challenge for so many people, you know, that, you know, like for instance, Uber is trying to make a splash in logistics space and frankly, they're really struggling. Actually, you know, you'll see that they, you know, are just winding down their autonomous ventures because it's just so hard to penetrate this large market and, you know, things just don't move that quickly. So, you know, sadly, the technology is available, it's just not being applied. And I think some of that also has to do with the cost of technology, right? We all know it's very expensive to invest in a new software package or do, you know, different digital tracking or what have you. And, you know, again, when you think about an industry that, you know, has bare bones margins, you know, that's, they don't have their sights set on tomorrow. They're just trying to get through today.
Understood, yes. I have one last question here, unless anybody has any more to put into the chat room. You're asking about common mistakes made by your clients and what you would suggest they could do to avoid them.
Paul, you want to jump in? I feel like I'm monopolizing, but.
Well, I would think that the most important action that could be taken to avoid delays from an importer standpoint is to make sure that all of your documentation is provided to the broker as early as possible and as accurately as possible. And the other, and the other common mistake I'm seeing now, which is a completely different topic, but I'm going to bring it up anyway, is the requirement for a DUNS number for supplier registration in 2021. And that deadline is looming very quickly. And I know Bob stressed it and I want to reiterate that, that that's a wrench that could go into gears that could be very difficult to solve and very expensive. If your foreign supplier does not have a DUNS number going into 2021, their FDA registration number comes back, it gets bounced back when we file the FDA entry and the container is already here and it's sitting at the pier. And we have to try and struggle to get a valid FDA registration number without the DUNS number. And I know Dawn Hines spoke about it yesterday and I had an email exchange with her earlier today. And she is going to determine when and if the hard deadline will be for those FDA registration numbers that are lacking the DUNS number. And when that critical date arrives, what FDA's action will be. So again, early documentation, accurate documentation, and just make sure that those registration DUNS numbers are taken care of for 2021 now because Dunn and Bradstreet doesn't actually react as quickly as we would like them to. But, and then you can pay an expedited fee. But if you have to pay an expedited fee and they take five to 10 days to get the DUNS number assigned in 2021 and your container is here already, it's going to be very expensive and costly. That's all I have.
Do either of you have anything you'd like to add that maybe we didn't cover in this question and answer session? I know both presentations were very informative and comprehensive, especially when put together. But if you have anything to add now, it would be a nice time to hear from you.
Well, I'll just add on to Paul's comment there from a domestic point of view. You know, I would encourage you to try to pre-plan and send advance notice on your bookings that you need, no matter which mode of transport it is. And then the second piece is when thinking about when you want something to arrive or when it's due, try to prioritize as well. If something, you know, is, you know, has a real drop dead date or a production line waiting on it versus, you know, maybe it just needs to be here by the end of next week or something like that. And try to coordinate with your, with your providers about the different priority levels, you know, of the freight so that they can do their best in some cases, maybe to work on pricing with you if there's more flexibility. Or if it's got to go, ensure that, you know, there's no headaches or late deliveries or anything like that. Because they know, hey, you know, this one over here is a little more important than the regular ones or it might be a new client for you or something like that. So I would just add that the more that you can communicate with your providers, the better that they will serve you. And that'll be the case for the next couple of months.
Okay, also very, very helpful, great advice and a lot of good information here from both of you. Thank you, both Paul and Greg, for joining us here today and answering everybody's questions too. I appreciate it, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Bob Ballard for another AFI update before we go to break. On our break, before we have an actual break, we're going to do another guessing game. We'll unmute everybody and in this one will be a landmark guessing game after Bob Ballard joins us.
Okay, great. I'll just take a couple of seconds here. I just wanted to make sure members are aware that AFI is part of the Port Coalition Group that sounds awful and provides input on various port issues. So the frustrations that were expressed in the questions are some of the issues that that coalition is trying to address. It started out, I don't know, eight to 10 years ago or so when there was the huge issue in the west coast ports. So we've been a member since then. We don't do a lot of the heavy lifting there because there's people who are a lot more well-first in that than we are. But we get the updates and AFI's name is on there. And just like with some other things, like the occasions where we send something to members, say, we have a chance to add company names onto letters and all that. So when we send that, we encourage you to sign on to those. So just wanted to give that update real quick and I'll turn it back over to Aaron.
Okay, thank you. This, we're at the segment of our town meeting today where we have a break, a landmark guessing game sponsored by Coflin Insurance Services. You can call out if you know the answer, call it out and it'll be a minute or so before the answer is given. So let's play the landmark. Any guesses?
A bonsai tree?
It's in California.
A tree, no.
What's this thing?
The salmon.
Joshua tree.
Joshua tree.
But it never did.
Joshua.
You're psychic.
Pebble Beach.
Pebble Beach.
These guys only know golf and Pebble Beach.
Yeah, we don't go out often.
That's the tree around my neck.
I'll have it inside. Advantage here.
I almost speaking? Hey, Joshua. Yeah. Abraham Lincoln, Lincoln Memorial.
Is that JJ?
Yeah.
Golden Gate Bridge.
Golden Gate Bridge.
Not the valley when I see.
What's your name again?
Paul Jefferson's chin.
Space Needle.
Statue of Liberty.
Statue of Liberty.
Ah, yeah.
Very fast guessing there, Mike.
Grand Canyon.
Niagara Falls.
Ontario campus.
That's where I want to go.
Machu Picchu.
Great Wall of China.
Eric, did you give JJ the answers ahead of time?
Oh, my God.
Great library.
Abu Simbel.
Indiana Jones.
Great library.
Abu Simbel.
Elise's. Mignos.
La Mancha.
Yeah, Mignos.
We are right on schedule at 12:35 and I'd like to take another five minutes if you want to stretch your legs, take a break and meet us back here for our next speaker, which will be Ryan Newkirk of the FDA. I think it's 12:40 and I'm about to introduce our next presentation. Is everybody back? Ready? Okay, our next speaker is Ryan Newkirk. Ryan is the Senior Advisor for Intentional Adulteration at FDA and he's a member of the Food Defense and Emergency Coordination Staff at the Center for Food Safety and Applied He's the Lead for Food Safety Modernization Act Intentional Adulteration Rule Writing Work Group and is the co-lead for the group writing the rules guidance. Dr. Newkirk has worked in terrorism prevention for 20 years with a focus on food defense for more than 10 years. Prior to joining FDA, Dr. Newkirk held a postdoctoral position with the United States Department of Agriculture, Food Safety and Inspection Service, Food Defense and Assessment Staff. He completed his doctorate in epidemiology and food defense research at the Food Protection and Defense Institute at the University of Minnesota School of Public Health. Please help me welcome Dr. Ryan Newkirk.
Hello, I'm Ryan Newkirk, a Senior Advisor for Intentional Adulteration with FDA's Center for Food Safety and Applied Nutrition on the Food Defense and Emergency Coordination Staff. I was the lead for the Food Safety Modernization Act's Intentional Adulteration Rule Writing Work Group and will be providing a high-level overview of the rule and its requirements. The full title of the final rule is Mitigation Strategies to Protect Food Against Intentional Adulteration. For those familiar with the proposed rule, you'll notice a slight title change. Focused Mitigation Strategies to Protect Food Against Intentional Adulteration was the title of the proposed rule. And I'll talk a little bit later about why we made that change. On December 24th of 2013, we published the proposed rule and received more than 200 comments to the docket on the original proposal. Importantly, we also engaged in three public meetings and a number of different listening sessions where further stakeholder thinking was brought to the table. This included recommendations for changes to the proposal, support for certain pieces of the proposal, and important dialogue related to the proposal overall. The final rule was published on May 27th of 2016. The effective date for this rule is July 26th of 2016 and I'll talk about compliance dates for different business sizes later in the presentation. So what does the IA rule do? What is the overarching principle of the rule? The rule establishes requirements to prevent or significantly minimize acts intended to cause wide-scale public health harm. And I'll pull out two key components of that statement. The first component is acts intended to cause. Here, we are focusing on those acts involving a person or group of people that are doing something to food to cause harm to others. The second piece is the piece regarding wide-scale public health harm. In the Food Safety Modernization Act, Congress directed FDA to apply the requirements of this rule only to those points, steps, or procedures in the food system at highest risk for intentional adulteration. When we analyze the spectrum of risk related to intentional adulteration, wide-scale public health harm causing significant human morbidity and mortality was that of highest risk. And that's how we are organizing and scoping the rule to prevent those exact acts. And how do we go about doing this? We are requiring a HACCP-type approach. I will note that while we are using a HACCP-type approach, it is not strictly HACCP. And I will be pointing out the differences between this rule and the Preventive Controls for Human Food Rule, or known as the PC Rule, throughout the presentation. Finally, the rule is risk-based and flexible. Again, Congress directed FDA to apply the requirements of this rule only to those areas at highest risk. And this direction provided a key foundational theme of the requirements of the rule. We have also provided flexibility in the rule. In the proposed rule, we published requirements with an amount of flexibility we felt appropriate. When analyzing the comments and engaging with the public about the proposed requirements, we noted that there are a number of other areas in the requirements where we could increase flexibility and we did so in the final rule. While we are talking about changes between the proposed and final rules, there are two main categories or buckets of changes. The one we just discussed relates to increased flexibility. The other bucket, which is almost opposite to the first, is that for some areas in the proposed rule, we received comments indicating that it would be better for FDA to provide more concrete thoughts on certain areas. And so the second bucket of changes deals with exactly that. And I'll highlight some of those examples in this presentation. So who is covered by the rule? In general, the rule applies to facilities required to register with FDA under Section 415 of the FD and C Act. Here, what we mean are facilities that manufacture, process, pack, or hold human food. We do want to note that this does not include farms, nor does it include retail food establishments. Importantly, this rule does apply to both domestic and imported food. And now we'll highlight the exemptions and one modified requirement of the rule. Very small businesses. These very small businesses have one modified requirement, which I will discuss on the next slide. Holding of food is exempt from the rule, except the holding of food in liquid storage tanks. Over the past 10 to 15 years, we have been conducting food defense vulnerability assessments with industry, academia, and other government partners. We combined all of that data together, analyzed it, and if you're aware from the proposed rule, we introduced the idea of key activity types. Key activity types are general categories of food processing steps or procedures that ranked highly in terms of vulnerability regardless of the commodity in question in the vulnerability assessments. So what we have found is that there are no particular foods that are more inherently vulnerable to intentional adulteration compared to other foods. Rather, the main drivers of vulnerability are the processing steps and procedures that we use as we move food from farm to table. The four groups of processing steps scoring highly in the vulnerability assessments are the key activity types. Two of the four key activity types deal with liquids and they are liquid storage and handling and bulk liquid receiving and loading. Because those points ranked high in terms of vulnerability, again, regardless of the food being assessed, we cover holding of food in liquid storage tanks in the rule. For the next exemption, packing, repacking, labeling, or relabeling of food where the container that directly contacts the food remains intact, those activities are exempt. Activities of a farm subject to the Produce Safety Rule, in other words, activities being conducted under FDA's new farm definition, those are exempt. Manufacturing, processing, packing, or holding of food for animals, those activities are exempt. Alcoholic beverages at certain facilities under specified conditions are also exempt. Finally, there is a new exemption in the final rule, which was not included in the proposed rule. For this exemption, Congress directed FDA to conduct an analysis of risk on what we call farm-mixed-type facilities. These facilities do two things. First, they conduct activities under the farm definition. And second, they conduct activities under manufacturing and processing. This last piece triggers the registration requirement and therefore brings them into coverage under the IA rule. In the analysis of risk, we have determined that there are two finished foods coming out of these facilities that are not high-risk for intentional adulteration. These are eggs in shell, other than raw agricultural commodities. So for example, think pasteurized eggs in shell. And the second food is certain types of game meats. This exemption only applies to these two foods being manufactured by farm-mixed-type facilities. And furthermore, it only applies to mixed-type facilities that are also small or very small businesses. This exemption is very detailed and I would direct those interested in learning more about it to the preamble of the final rule. I briefly touched on very small businesses in the last slide. The main requirements of the rule do not apply to very small businesses. The IA rule definition for very small businesses are those entities averaging less than $10 million per year in both sales of human food plus the market value of human food manufactured, processed, packed, or held without sale, for example, held for a fee. Very small businesses are required to provide for official review upon request from the regulator, documentation sufficient to show that the facility qualifies for this exemption. So in other words, very small businesses are required to keep that documentation and if FDA requests to see it, facilities need to produce it. And the documentation needs to show that the entities are under the $10 million average annual sales threshold. This is the only IA rule requirement. This is the only IA rule requirement for very small businesses. Moving on to the major requirements of the rule. The rule requires the writing and implementation of a food defense plan. That plan includes five main components, and there are records requirements throughout each of those components. The first component of a food defense plan is a vulnerability assessment to identify points in the facility that are most vulnerable. Once this is done, facilities then identify mitigation strategies to reduce or prevent those vulnerabilities. After that, facilities are required to have procedures for food defense monitoring, food defense corrective actions, and food defense verification. The rule also has a training requirement. Training is another area we heard quite a bit about in the public comments. We heard this signal very clearly that training was important for facilities to have an adequate food defense posture. Before getting into the first part of the food defense plan, I want to highlight two key terms. We do have analogies in the food safety arena for these key terms, but these particular terms are specific to intentional adulteration. The first, actionable process steps, are point, steps, or procedures in a food process where a significant vulnerability exists and at which mitigation strategies can be applied and are essential to significantly minimize or prevent the significant vulnerability. Another way to think about actionable process steps is that once a facility conducts a vulnerability assessment, these are the steps that are identified as most vulnerable to intentional adulteration. Second, mitigation strategies. These are risk-based, reasonably appropriate measures that a person knowledgeable about food defense would employ to significantly minimize or prevent significant vulnerabilities identified at actionable process steps, and that are also consistent with this current scientific understanding of food defense at the time of the analysis. Think of mitigation strategies as the activities put in place to reduce the vulnerability at these highly vulnerable points. Moving on to the vulnerability assessment requirement. We believe that the vulnerability assessment is the most novel and complex requirement of the rule. The goal of the vulnerability assessment is to identify those points at highest risk, or again, what we call actionable process steps. There are important changes from the proposed rule to the final rule related to vulnerability assessments. In the proposed rule, we talked about numerous characteristics that were important to include in a vulnerability assessment, and we discussed the history of FDA, USDA, industry, as well as others when conducting vulnerability assessments. This is one of those areas that we heard during the public comment period that required more thinking from FDA, and we have provided more details and concrete thinking in the final rule. In conducting a vulnerability assessment, for each point, step, or procedure, a facility must consider the following at a minimum. The potential public health impact if a contaminant were added at that point under assessment. The degree of physical access to the product. In other words, can an attacker physically access the food stream at this point? And finally, the ability of an attacker to successfully contaminate the product. Examples to consider under this particular element are the ability of an attacker to bring a certain amount of contaminant into the facility or their ability to add that contaminant to the food stream without detection. This requirement provides significant flexibility. We are not specifying a particular methodology for vulnerability assessments. Facilities may choose the vulnerability assessment method of their liking. However, the vulnerability assessment must consider these three things for each point under assessment to be considered adequate. Another change from the proposed to the final rule related to vulnerability assessments is that in the proposed rule, we talked about the importance of considering the possibility of an inside attacker. In the final rule, we have made this a requirement under the vulnerability assessment component. Here, I'll again note Congress's direction to FDA to only cover foods at highest risk for this rule. In conducting vulnerability assessments with industry and government partners, including the intelligence agencies, we've jointly determined the scenario of highest risk includes an inside attacker. And therefore, we have finalized the vulnerability assessment requirement to consider this scenario. The outcome of the assessment must be written and include an explanation of why the point, step, or procedure was identified as an actionable process step, or why it was not. And finally, I do want to note that key activity types are considered an appropriate method to conduct a vulnerability assessment. In the proposed rule, we discussed key activity types at length. This is one area in the public comment period where we heard numerous comments, both in support of key activity types and requesting significant changes to key activity types. One of the themes of these comments indicated that if key activity types needed to be changed, those changes would be more easily made if the key activity types were moved into guidance, and we agreed. While we are moving key activity types into guidance, we do want to clearly state that key activity types are considered an appropriate method to conduct a vulnerability assessment. Once facilities conduct the vulnerability assessment, they move to the mitigation strategies requirement. As a reminder, these are measures to ensure significant vulnerabilities at actionable process steps are minimized or prevented. Mitigation strategies must be implemented for each actionable process step. There are two changes from the proposed rule to the final rule regarding strategies. First, in the proposed rule, we discussed the importance of facilities including a written explanation describing how the identified mitigation strategies reduce or prevent significant vulnerabilities. In the final rule, we have included this explanation as a requirement. We recognize that mitigation strategies can be, and in fact must be, facility-specific. Therefore, facilities are in the best position to know which mitigation strategies are appropriate for their particular vulnerabilities, processes, and procedures. The rule reflects this by providing facilities the flexibility to identify the best strategy. Because this degree of flexibility is significant, we are requiring facilities to write the explanations in order to provide a description as to how the strategies minimize or prevent the vulnerability. We also believe the explanations will help facilities comply with the requirement to verify the proper implementation of mitigation strategies. The second change is the removal of the distinction between broad and focused mitigation strategies. There were many comments on this aspect of the proposal, both in support of and suggesting changes to this distinction. There is a spectrum of mitigation strategies, and some comments stated that the line we attempted to draw in the proposed rule was too stark. After considering these comments, we understood this point and we removed that distinction. Of note, this is also the reason why we slightly changed the title from the proposed rule to the final rule by removing the term focused. Next, we have the mitigation strategy management components. These include three main requirements of the food defense plan. The management components create a system to ensure that the mitigation strategies are properly implemented and are in fact reducing vulnerabilities. I want to highlight very similar terminology here between the final IA rule and the final PC rule. That terminology is on the screen and is monitoring, corrective actions, and verification. However, I'll also note some differences. We have qualified these requirements by indicating food defense monitoring, food defense corrective actions, and food defense verification. This is directly related to the nature of mitigation strategies compared to the nature of preventive controls. Preventive controls are more likely to be process-oriented and lend themselves to scientific validation, calibration, and sometimes testing. The nature of mitigation strategies is very different. The nature of strategies is focused squarely on minimizing and/or preventing intentional adulteration. They are put into place to reduce access to the food stream at a particular point, step, or procedure. And they are put into place to prevent or minimize the ability of an attacker to successfully contaminate the food supply at a particular point, step, or procedure. Mitigation strategies, due to their nature, do not necessarily lend themselves to scientific validation, nor are the vast majority of strategies process-oriented. As you can see, the nature of preventive controls and mitigation strategies is very different. And this difference must be considered when complying with the IA rule. The management components create a food defense system that must recognize these differences in order to ensure that once the vulnerabilities are identified, mitigation strategies are properly implemented and are reducing those vulnerabilities. For the food defense monitoring requirement, facilities must have written procedures, including the frequency they are to be performed, for monitoring mitigation strategies. This needs to be incorporated as appropriate to the nature of the mitigation strategy. Monitoring must be documented in records subject to food defense verification. An important difference between food defense monitoring and monitoring for preventive controls emerges due to the nature of the two activities. For preventive controls and food safety activities, constant monitoring may be more appropriate for something such as time and temperature control. That is not the case for food defense monitoring. For example, if the mitigation strategy was a lock on a liquid storage silo, we would not expect the facility to constantly monitor that lock. A more appropriate method for monitoring may be monitoring the lock at the end of the silo's cleaning cycle, such as every 24 or 48 hours. For food defense corrective actions, facilities must have written procedures or previously determined steps to be taken when mitigation strategies are not properly implemented, as appropriate to the nature of the actionable process step, as well as the nature of the mitigation strategy. Two important pieces to note here are that facilities must identify and correct problems with mitigation strategies, and facilities must reduce the likelihood of recurrence of those problems. Corrective actions must be documented in records subject to food defense verification. Food defense verification includes verification that monitoring is being conducted and verification that appropriate decisions about corrective actions are being made, again as appropriate to the nature of the mitigation strategy and its role in the facility's food defense system. Verification that mitigation strategies are properly implemented is accomplished by records review of both monitoring records and corrective action records. An important piece to highlight here is that there is a component of the verification requirement which includes increased flexibility from the proposed rule to the final rule. In the proposed rule, we talked in depth about how verification of proper implementation of mitigation strategies is only done through records review. Comments indicated that there are other activities that could be used to comply with this requirement. We agreed with that, and we have provided for that in the final rule. Finally, verification activities must be documented in records. Now we will discuss the requirements related to the triggers for reanalysis of the food defense plan. At least once every three years, the entire plan must be re-analyzed. The next trigger occurs whenever there is a significant change that creates the potential for a new vulnerability or a significant increase in one previously identified. The next trigger occurs when there is new information about potential vulnerabilities associated with a food operation or a food facility. There are a few changes in the next two triggers. The first trigger on this slide occurs when it is found that a mitigation strategy is not properly implemented. One note related to the proposed rule and this particular trigger. In the proposal, we intended for this trigger to apply only to a particular strategy found to be improperly implemented. The public comments indicated that this was not clear and could be read that the entire plan must be re-analyzed in this situation. We have clarified this requirement to require in the final rule that when a mitigation strategy is not properly implemented, the reanalysis only focuses on that particular strategy. Finally, the last trigger for reanalysis is whenever FDA requires reanalysis to respond to new vulnerabilities, credible threats, or developments in scientific understanding related to intentional adulteration. There is a new piece for this trigger as well between the proposed and final rules, and that is the issue of credible threats. We received a number of well-thought-out public comments related to credible threats. We agreed that there is a need to incorporate credible threats into the requirements of the final rule and have decided the most appropriate place to do that is in the reanalysis requirements. Next, we'll move on to the training requirements. As mentioned earlier, we received many comments on training, and there was very strong support to include training in the final rule, as well as to include more training than what we proposed. The first element of our training requirement is very basic and states that all individuals performing activities for this rule must be qualified to do so. A qualified individual is defined as a person having the appropriate education, training, or experience, or a combination thereof, necessary to properly perform the activities. The next two elements are requirements for employees working at actionable process steps and their supervisors. These individuals must complete training in food defense awareness, as well as training in proper implementation of mitigation strategies at actionable process steps. The next element of training is a bit different and has to do with certain components of the food defense plan. We heard in the public comment period that some components of the food defense plan are more complex, and FDA should have additional training requirements related to these components in the final rule, and we agreed. There are four pieces to this element of the training requirements. Those pieces are the writing of the food defense plan, conducting the vulnerability assessment, identifying mitigation strategies and writing the explanation for how those strategies reduce the vulnerabilities, and finally, the reanalysis component that we just covered. I'll note here that FDA and the Intentional Adulteration Subcommittee of the Food Safety Preventive Controls Alliance are writing a standardized curriculum for IA rule-related training, and this curriculum will include these four items. I will also note here again that we have been working with industry for quite a while on food defense. And we wanted to recognize that there are individuals and groups who do have the expertise and experience to conduct these types of activities. We've incorporated this recognition into the codified text by providing that individuals may also be qualified by education, experience, training, or a combination thereof. Next, we have a requirement to establish and maintain certain records, including the food defense plan as a whole, food defense monitoring records, corrective action records, and verification records. Also, we require documentation records relating to the training of personnel. An important change from the proposed to the final rule, in particular to those who have been conducting food defense activities for some time, concerns the use of existing records for compliance with some of the requirements of the rule. We acknowledge that there are facilities who have been involved in food defense for a number of years and that may have records related to these activities. Some of these records may count towards compliance with the requirements of the final rule. We strongly suggest that facilities read through each requirement of the rule and determine if the existing records meet these requirements. Now we'll move to compliance dates. Similar to many other FISA rules, the IA rule has staggered compliance dates based on business size. We have different dates for very small businesses, small businesses, and other businesses. Very small businesses, which as a reminder, only have the modified requirement to produce documentation upon request, showing that they are under the $10 million threshold, have five years after the effective date to comply. So these businesses with the modified requirement must comply by July 26th of the year 2021. Small businesses, which we have defined similarly to other FISA rules as those with fewer than 500 full-time equivalent employees, must be fully compliant with the rule within four years after the effective date, by July 27th of the year 2020. Finally, all other businesses covered by the rule have three years after the effective date to fully comply, by July 26th of the year 2019. These are significant changes from the proposed to the final rule, as we have extended each of these compliance dates by two additional years. We acknowledge that while some industry entities have food defense experience, others do not. Food defense and key elements of intentional adulteration prevention are novel to many in industry. We understand it is critical to allow stakeholders adequate time to learn about intentional adulteration and how to prevent it, learn about this rule, and engage in dialogue, education, and outreach with regulators. And these are the primary reasons we have provided for extended compliance dates. We will be publishing planned guidance, the topics of which I have discussed in this presentation. Vulnerability assessments and how to properly conduct them, how to identify and implement mitigation strategies, what food defense monitoring, food defense corrective actions, and food defense verification procedures look like, how to comply with record-keeping requirements, and finally, a small entity compliance guide to assist small and very small businesses to comply with this rule. There has been significant interest in training related to this rule, so we also have plans for training as well as technical assistance. As I alluded to earlier, we have established the Intentional Adulteration Subcommittee within the Food Safety Preventive Controls Alliance to create a rule-associated training curriculum. FDA also established the Technical Assistance Network, or the TAN. FDA has received and responded to numerous FISA-related questions through the TAN, including questions related to this rule. We encourage those with questions to submit their inquiries to the TAN, as this will allow for those questions to be answered, and will also assist FDA in identifying important topics for each rule. The international aspects of training and technical assistance will build on the domestic activities I just covered. We will collaborate with the Food Safety Preventive Controls Alliance on capacity building through its international subcommittee. We will work with regulatory counterparts and multinational organizations. We will also develop and disseminate education, outreach, and technical materials, and finally, we'll establish training and technical assistance networks. Here on the last slide of the presentation, we are providing the web address for FDA's Food Safety Modernization Act page, as well as the link there in the last bullet, to the Technical Assistance Network. I appreciate your interest in the FISA intentional adulteration rule, and I thank you for your time.
And we thank you, Ryan. I hope that you were able to join us during that presentation and might be able to stay a few minutes to answer some questions. Are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I was hoping so. Yes, Ryan, thanks for joining us.
Sure. Thanks for having me.
Sure. Now, that was a lot of information. I think all of it very pertinent to our attendees, and I appreciate it very much. We do have a couple of questions we want to ask you before we let you go. The first one is, how does this rule interact with the FSVP rule?
Yeah, great, great question. I'd just like to start off quickly by saying, remind me never to get into a guessing contest with JJ, because he nailed all of those. So that's a lesson learned for me here. But how the rule interacts, how the IA rule and the FSVP rule interact, and I'll tell you, the short answer is they really don't interact hardly at all. Some people kind of have a hard time wrapping their heads around that, because all the FISA rules are very complex, and a lot of them are intricate related. But when we were writing the IA rule and the FSVP rule, we were discussing the best ways for those two rules to interact, and how we shook out was basically FSVP and the PC rules and the farm rule, they all kind of worked out together, where the intentional adulteration rule is somewhat different, and that's because of the hazards that we are trying to prevent and minimize with that rule. So there's quite a bit of separation between the IA rule and the FSVP rule. It is not at all a similar relationship like FSVP is with the PC rules, for instance.
Okay, well, as I can understand that, and now more about the documentation. As an importer, what documents will you need from the suppliers for this new rule?
So kind of as a step beyond what we had just talked about, for the IA rule, importers, if they are solely importers, and they are not manufacturers or processors required to register with FDA, if they are solely importers, you do not have a documentary requirement from the IA rule. So very important there. You don't have a documentary requirement there. Now for those entities that are importers and that are required to register as manufacturers and processors, look to the IA rule for the documentation that you need to have, because you need to comply under the IA rule, so that food defense plan, the monitoring, corrective action verification records, and the training records.
Okay, very good. Thank you. There's one last one, and you talked a lot about training. Will FDA take the educate while they regulate approach with this rule?
Great, great question. Because this is a fairly novel rule, we definitely have recognized that regulator and industry, we all need to kind of grow together and learn together for this space, and so we absolutely are taking that educate while we regulate stance for a decent amount of time. We really want to engage in conversations with industry, hear about their concerns, their questions, hear about what's going right. So we'll take those steps together.
All right, I'm glad to hear that. Thanks very much, Ryan. I really appreciate you joining us today live and for providing this pre-recorded presentation. We have said it before, but I'll mention it again, we will be making most of the presentations available next week through the AFI. The links that Ryan wants you to have are all in the chat room for you.
Great.
Thanks very much again for being here, Ryan.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, well, we are at the point where we were about to welcome our final speaker of the AFI Town Meeting. This is a fitting way to close it out. Scott Clemens is going to be with us in a minute to speak to the 2020 election and its likely impact on the economy. I know we have heard from Scott before, and it's always been a valuable presentation and insightful information, and so I'm looking forward to hearing what he has to say about the election and 2021. So Scott Clemens, if you don't already know, is a partner and chief investment strategist at Brown Brothers Harriman, where he has been since 1990. His career began in international equities, where he was an analyst and portfolio manager of European and Asian equities, working out of the firm's New York and London offices. In 2001, he broadened his responsibilities into domestic equity management and research as well. And then from 2005 through 2010, he managed the New York office and the firm's private wealth management business. In 2010, he was appointed chief investment strategist, and is today one of the firm's primary writers and speakers on topics related to the economy, financial markets, and investing. Scott's a frequent contributor to print and broadcast media, and appears regularly in the pages of The Wall Street Journal, Financial Times, New York Times, and on camera at CNBC, Bloomberg, and CNN. He joined us again here today to share his outlook for the economy after the recent election and what we can expect in 2021. Scott Clemens.
Hi there, my name is Scott Clemens, and I'm the chief investment strategist for Brown Brothers Harriman Private Banking in New York City. I'm thrilled to be with you today. I wish I could be with you in person, of course, and look forward to doing so again at some point in the very near future. What I'd like to do over the next 25 minutes or so is run through a very high level, the current state of the economy and financial markets, looking a little bit backwards onto 2020 in the context of the pandemic, obviously, but then looking forward into 2021 as well to the degree that my crystal ball allows to see what the future has in store for us. Let me start by looking a little bit back towards the election. It seems in some ways like forever ago, although obviously, certain aspects of it are still being played out on Twitter and social media even as we talk. It's all but over. Most of the states, and particularly those states that were swing states, have certified their votes. You see the important ones here. The next date on the calendar approaching very rapidly is December the 8th. That's an important date, because that is the date at which the federal election law says, if each individual state has followed the rules and procedures that it has set out, and if they have certified their votes, it's over. It's all over but the shouting. So as December the 8th approaches, the legal remedies that the Trump administration is bringing to bear become harder and harder to see as they work their way through federal courts. Of course, the Electoral College itself votes on December the 14th. Over the last four years, a number of states, 33 in total, have passed laws requiring electors to vote in accordance with the way the state directs them to. So the risk of the so-called faithless electors and elector going rogue is far less now than it has been in previous years. There's one final step, the new Congress, which sits on January 3rd, will then look at those Electoral College results and certify them yet one more time. That new Congress may or may not at that point actually include the results of the two Senate races in Georgia, which take place on January 5th. And of course, the outcome of those two races will be critical in determining what the balance of power is in the new Senate. The fact that Congress certifies that Electoral College vote just one day after those Georgia runoffs tells me that those two victors, be they Democrats or Republicans, not likely to be seated in time to weigh in on that. But the outcome is all but certain that Joe Biden, the president-elect, will be sworn in as the new president on January 20th. If at this point I had to guess, I would guess that the Senate would remain in Republican control, albeit with a very narrow margin. So we wind up with divided government. That tends to be pretty good for financial markets, tends to be pretty good for the economy as well. Obviously, divided government prevents any one party from running too far in one direction or the other with policies. The important thing to watch going forward is what we've seen play out over the course of this year, which is the very tight linkage between a global health crisis, the effect that it's had on the economy, and the effect that it could have on financial markets, but has not, at least recently. I think that the pandemic and the economic crisis are really two sides of the same coin. And here, I'm afraid that things are going to get worse before they get better, and I'll show you a few charts that you don't need to see, because we're bombarded by this daily. As of early December, US cases of COVID were well back to all-time highs, and unfortunately, we're seeing a very similar surge in mortality as well. And given the fact that we're just entering into the colder months of the year, at least in the Northeast, this indeed is likely to get worse before it gets better for some time to come. And it's pretty widespread, unlike earlier surges in either cases or mortality that were localized in the Northwest back in February of this year. That shifted to more the Northeast, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut in April and May, then to the Southeast in the early summer. The surges now are pretty widespread. The bubbles on the graph you see in front of you, there's one for every state, it's rather crowded in the middle, and it measures three variables. On the vertical axis, you have the rise in cases, and that's just a November average versus an October average. Every state is rising, no state is declining. On the horizontal axis, you have the prevalence, the number of cases per 100,000 population. So it measures how widespread COVID is within the state. And then the size of the orb is just the absolute number of cases. You see a couple of themes here. Upper left-hand corner, very rapid growth, but not a lot of cases. The very Northeast, Vermont, Maine, New Hampshire, it's a worrisome growth in cases, but the overall case level is relatively small. The orbs are rather small. The lower right-hand corner, the Dakotas, 10% of the population has been diagnosed positive. That's not herd immunity yet, but they're beginning to get to the point where case counts are slowing down, simply because more and more people have it. Most of the country is both right there in the middle. Cases still rising, 100, 150% month over month, about 4% of the population cumulatively diagnosed, but again, it argues probably for a couple of more months of bad news before the good news rounds the corner. The good news, obviously, we get almost on a daily basis now, it seems, is that a number of vaccines have moved their way rather rapidly through trials and are getting closer and closer to distribution. There are 237 vaccines in development. It's possible I missed a few as I counted them up. The three lead candidates is what I've shown you here with some data points. Pfizer and Moderna have released Phase III trials. The efficacy is 95-ish percent. The FDA this month is considering offering an emergency use authorization, i.e. putting these drugs actually into people before the end of December. And the European Medicines Agency, the EMA, is considering doing the same thing at about the same kind of timeframe. And then, of course, the third on this list, AstraZeneca, just earlier in December, received the UK equivalent of emergency use authorization, and will begin to be delivered there as well. Remember, though, that there's a difference between vaccines and vaccinations. The logistical challenges associated with manufacturing and delivering and distributing enough doses to enough people to get to herd immunity, that is still probably a logistical exercise measured. That is still probably a logistical exercise measured in months or maybe even quarters. But my anticipation is by the time we get into the spring months of 2021, these vaccines will be widely enough available to where we can begin to get back to some semblance of pre-pandemic normal. The reason that's important economically is perhaps obvious, is that it has a lot of impact on consumer confidence. And particularly here in the States, this is very important. Personal consumption is 68% of GDP, 68% of GDP, two-thirds, a little bit more of GDP. And people who lack confidence, people who are worried about their jobs, worried about their health, worried about their families, that lack of confidence doesn't translate into a lot of spending. You can see the big drop in consumer confidence. That's April of this year for obvious reasons. But see what happened after that. Those numbers have sort of bounced around at a pretty low level. The confidence numbers are not yet back and we will get them back when we have greater confidence in the deliverability of a vaccine. The other data series that I watch very closely is the labor market and for the same reason. Again, if people are worried about their jobs or if they're out of work, they're not spending a lot of money. That translates into pretty sluggish economic activity. What you're looking at on this page is the weekly initial claims for unemployment. These are people filing for unemployment insurance for the first time, week by week. You can see here a rather predictable and depressingly familiar pattern of a big spike in this stress in March and into early April of this year, followed by an admittedly gratifying recovery, but the absolute level here is still pretty worrisome. We are still adding about 700,000 people per week to the unemployment rolls. To put that into some context, the peak in this series in the previous economic cycle, thinking back to the global financial crisis, was 665,000 in March of 2009. That was the worst week, 665,000. We have now been running higher than that mark for 37 consecutive weeks. So there is still a lot of pain in the labor market. And although there has been some improvement in unemployment rates, there is still further to go. What you're looking at on this page is the familiar headline unemployment. That's the red line. The headline so-called because it's what tends to dominate the reporting on the matter. In October, this was 6.9%. It's improved a long way. I don't deny that at all. A broader measure of employment is down to 12.1%. The unemployment rate for people with a college degree or higher, back down to 4.2%. These are gratifying improving trends. But when you look at it on an absolute basis, it really starkly spells out how much more ground has to be recovered. This is just total levels of US employment, total number of people employed. We lost in the space of just about two months, 22 million jobs. That's the big drop you see in this chart. Since then, we have recovered 12 million. That's a good thing. That still leaves us 10 million jobs short of where we were in January and February of 2020. So this is a classic half-full, half-empty glass that we're looking at. Half-full is we've had a nice rebound in a lot of measures of economic activity. Half-empty is there's still a lot of room left to go. Maybe put into the half-empty category is the observation that this recovery in economic activity seems to be slowing down. The curse of economics worldwide is that economic data is always backward-looking and it's usually rather lagged as well. So I have grown fond of looking at some higher frequency economic statistics that are not even official economic statistics. This one, which will be close to the hearts of the people on this webinar, measures restaurant reservations on a year-over-year basis. These are restaurant reservations made through the opentable.com platform, which I'm sure you're all familiar. The absolute levels here are interesting. What's more interesting to me is the shape of these charts. A lot of volatility, obviously, but you can see the shutdown in the spring. Restaurant reservations fell 100% because restaurants were closed, followed by a recovery into the summer of the year that is either plateaued or maybe even turned a little bit down. This data here runs through early December of this year. Overall, US still down 68% year-over-year. Some cities in the South are a little better than that. Some cities here in the Northeast, I'm in New York, are down more than that. And of course, just in the past few days, Los Angeles has gone into another pretty widespread shutdown. So their numbers are down 100%. Again, they've flatlined again. Hopefully that's temporary. But you see this, this recovery, but then a slowdown in the pace of that recovery. And you see it elsewhere as well. Much was made over the Thanksgiving holidays about how many people were traveling. And that's certainly true. There, there were some days in which there were over a million people going through a TSA checkpoint. But when you compare that to where we were a year ago, the average TSA daily checkpoint passenger traffic is two, two and a half million souls. We're at about a million now. So still down somewhere around 50 or 60%. So we've seen a pause, at least in the pace of this recovery from the economic malaise of earlier this year. Why would that be the case? The first reason, and maybe the most obvious reason, is simply that as economies began to reopen a little bit in May and June and into the summer, a lot of that pent-up demand was met. If you hadn't had a haircut in two or three months, you went out and got one. But you didn't make up for lost time by getting six haircuts in a row. Once you got your haircut, once you got the oil changed in your car, once you replaced the refrigerator, whatever was on your to-do list, it was done. The pent-up demand was met and that didn't lead to further demand. A second reason, a more legislative reason, is that the various aspects of the CARES Act began to expire as, as long ago now as late summer and running all the way through the end of 2020. So what was intended to be a, a bridge, not really a stimulus package, but a bridge until the labor market could recover, turns out to have been too short. Now, there's a lot of talk in Washington now about another stimulus package coming. I don't have any particular insight into the political dynamics in Washington, particularly now. I do believe there will be another stimulus package. I do believe that maybe the new Congress will find a way to add to what the CARES Act already did. But for the time being, part of the pause we're seeing is simply that many aspects of the original CARES Act have come to an end. And of course, the third reason in the pause is that although it seems like deja vu all over again, we're once again worried about the impacts of a second surge or a third surge in COVID-19 cases. That's limiting travel. It's limiting shopping. It's limiting all the aspects of economic life that drive GDP. Now fortunately, the flow chart that I showed you earlier holds, but was broken earlier this year by quick action by the federal government and the Federal Reserve. And the economic crisis of April did not turn into a financial crisis. It did for a little bit, I readily admit, but the recovery in that was so quick. And here I give Chairman Jay Powell of the Federal Reserve and I give the Trump administration credit for passing legislation and introducing monetary policy pretty quickly that broke what I feared would become that third linkage. And indeed, markets have reflected that. We talk a lot about V-shaped recoveries in economies. I'm not quite sure we're getting that in the economy. We're getting that in financial markets. What you see in front of you, the blue line here is just the good old-fashioned S and P 500 index of large capitalization public US companies. It's up over 60% from the lows in March and it is back to all-time high levels. This is probably the question I get most often from clients. How can this chart exist? How can Wall Street be so disconnected from the reality of an economy that is still wrestling with a pandemic, still wrestling with high levels of unemployment, still wrestling with a lot of economic uncertainty? Well, the short answer to that is this is the way it's always worked. If you look back to, again, the last economic crisis coming out of the 2008, '09 downturn, that recession didn't technically end until the middle of 2009. And the labor market didn't begin to recover until the end of 2009. In that cycle, however, the market turned in March of 2009. And by the time it was evident that we were out of the woods already, the market was already up 70 or 80%. The market is a forward-looking mechanism. Investors anticipate what the future is going to hold and they invest accordingly today. And if we look at what investors are expecting, they're anticipating a rather sharp rebound in corporate earnings in 2021. What you're looking at here is the earnings growth of the S and P 500, again, large capitalization public companies. Blue bars are good, red bars are bad or declines. The gray bars on the very right-hand side are consensus expectations for 2021. And if you add those all up together, the market's expecting that corporate earnings will rebound next year by about 40%, 4-0%. Again, you ask, how can that be? And again, I say thus it has always been. If you look back, this chart goes back long enough, you can see on the left-hand side, the sharp rebound from the 2008 and '09 financial crisis. In a nutshell, what happens is during the period of economic stress, companies tighten their belt, they cut costs, they find ways to preserve their operating margins. So that as soon as there is any economic relief, the operating leverage kicks in and it falls almost straight to the bottom line. I expect that we will see that dynamic again. Indeed, operating margins for public companies have already rebounded to close to an all-time high. And as that cost savings really comes through in 2021, I think that we'll see operating margins for the S and P 500 rise to even higher levels. This is all happening in a backdrop in which interest rates remain pretty low. And that too is an added tailwind to the fortunes of equities. What you're looking at on this page are a good old-fashioned yield curves. This is the so-called term structure of government debt. These are yields on government bonds from a one-month maturity at the very left-hand side of the chart, all the way out to 30 years on the very right-hand side of the chart. Green line is the beginning of this year. You can see on March 26th, that was the period of maximum stress in financial markets, how far interest rates had fallen. They've risen a little bit since then, but interest rates still stand 100 to 150 basis points lower than they were at the beginning of this year. Cheaper money is good for companies, good for most companies, I should say, both public and private. And again, that too is a tailwind for the equity markets. And interest rates are likely to remain lower for longer. This graph here is the Fed funds rate. This is the official interest rate. It's set by the Federal Reserve Bank. What I've shaded in green is the futures market looking forward for the Fed funds rate. There's no guarantee in this. There's no promise behind this. What this is though, is a snapshot of what investors expect interest rates to be for the next four or five years. And that line is about as flat as the state of Kansas. Again, there's no guarantee here, but unless or until there are some real signs of inflationary pressure, the Federal Reserve is likely to keep monetary policy very easy, likely to keep interest rates very low. And again, that is an added tailwind for equity markets. A third reason why we've seen this big rally in equities is that a very small handful of very large members of the index have led the way. They're very familiar names. The right-hand side of this chart, the green bars, show you the year-to-date performance of Alphabet, that's Google, Microsoft, Facebook, Apple and Amazon. Those five companies add up to 23% of the value of the S and P 500. So it's just math. If the largest companies in the index do that well, it drags up the overall index level. Now that's changed a little bit more recently. The red bars on this page are the performance of these various things since Labor Day. Nothing magic about Labor Day. By the way, I just kind of picked it out of the hat. But you can see how there's been a little bit of a change and even a reversal in some of these trends. Market performance has broadened out. I welcome that. The bad news about a narrowly-led market, such as we've had for most of this year, is that narrow markets tend to be rather fragile. If investor sentiment turns against this small handful of large names, it will be reflected in the overall index performance. And indeed, it's almost inevitable that at some point in the next 12 months, that happens and we get some market volatility behind it. The good news though, is that in a narrowly-led market, a lot of companies have been left behind. So for an active investor, for an investor who is willing to take positions different from the overall equity market, i.e. not just by the overall index, there are plenty of opportunities left scattered throughout corporate America. I'm rounding third base now and coming to an end in the interest of leaving some time for questions. But just to wrap up, I think the election dust is settling. Attention is turning back to fundamentals. And the really tightly-linked fundamentals that I see are between our success in delivering vaccines, addressing the pandemic, the restoration of consumer confidence and the restoration of consumer spending. I do think that will unfold over the course of 2021. We may not see a lot of it in the first quarter, but by the time we get to the spring and vaccinations are more widely available, I think that light at the end of the tunnel will begin to be reflected in more normal sorts of economic growth. Equity investors are already looking ahead to that. They're already pricing in what's likely to be a return to normal in 2021. Markets have rallied a long way already. But in an environment of rising earnings and in an environment of pretty low interest rates, I think there's probably more to go. Although it may take place with some volatility because of the narrow leadership that we've had in the markets. With that, I'm going to bring this to an end. I'm going to thank you all for your attention. And we will now turn it over for some Q and A for the time that we have left.
Thank you very much, Scott. I can see that you're here with us now and I really appreciate you being here live and, and offering this pre-recorded presentation for us ahead of time as well, which helps our efficiency. I wonder, just since you recorded, are there any additional thoughts you have that you want to add before I turn it to questions?
Well, I've, I've actually, I've never been able to, to see myself present. This is a rare occasion. So thank you, Erin, for, for offering it up. I, I would say no. I mean, things have continued on. I think I recorded this about a week ago. Things have continued to unfold sort of the way in which we anticipated. I think we're going to wind up with a pretty difficult economic slog over the next two or three or four months, even if we do get a stimulus package now or in the new administration. I welcome the good news on vaccines, but the timeframes associated with rolling those vaccines out are such that we're likely to be living in some variation of the current circumstance for some time to come. The latter half of 2021 looks very good to me. We've just got to make it through late spring and into summer when vaccinations are much more widely available.
I have a, a similar feeling about that too and I'm, I'm looking forward to putting this all behind us, as I know we all are. I do see one question so far in the chat area and I'll read it to you, although you may be able to see it. Last month, Citibank issued a report that if indeed the COVID, COVID vaccines are effective worldwide, they expect the US dollar to fall 20% against the major currencies. Do you agree with that and why?
Well, I should say that I did not see that Citibank report, although I'm glad to have it brought to my attention because I will look it up. That would be an extreme fall and I find it very unlikely for a couple of reasons. One, the US currency has already weakened a fair bit against a lot of its major trading partners. So, so may, maybe some of that's already done and maybe the analysis behind that takes that into account. Two, if and when the vaccines become available and when we get back to some semblance of normality, I do think that our central bank, the Federal Reserve, will slowly but begin to move interest rates back to more historically normal levels. And we can debate what that means and I would, that would take three hours to debate that on its own. But the underlying fundamental engine of economic activity in the US, once we get through this vaccination period, is better than a lot of the rest of the world. So in an environment in which our central bank was more likely to raise interest rates than lower them further, in an environment which our economic recovery was stabler than a lot of the rest of the world, that's an environment in which the US dollar ought to strengthen, not weaken. I do not believe that that's a three-month or six-month type phenomenon, but looking out beyond that, it would, it would, something else would have to go very wrong for the US dollar to weaken 20% from here against a basket of trading partners.
Okay, that's good to hear. Another question I see here for you, Scott. Any thoughts on the closure of 60% of US restaurants?
Yeah, well, what you're seeing in, in those OpenTable stats that I showed you, and that's open source, by the way. If you go, you probably have already stumbled across this, but if you go to opentable.com, they're very generous with their data set. It's there for free and you can break it down by country or 30 or 40 different major metropolitan areas in the United States. What, what you're looking at are not necessarily restaurants that are closed, as in out of business, but restaurants that are not open right now or are in open but restaurants that are not open right now or are open at reduced capacity. So for example, here in New York City, restaurants are open, but indoor dining is limited to only 25% of capacity. So that if I'm running a restaurant and I'm fully booked tonight, I'll still show up as being down 75% year-over-year. What I worry about is that each day that goes by makes it less and less likely that that restaurant, dry cleaner, bakery, small business, will survive to see the other side of this economic cycle. And I'm afraid this may be a ripple effect that continues to reverberate for some time, even after vaccinations are widely available. I am a believer, though, in the economic law of creative destruction, partially because I see it play out as I walk around Manhattan, where I live. And I've been living in Manhattan long enough to see this cycle play out a number of times. A restaurant closes, a local business closes, and as unfortunate as that is, that storefront gets taken up in relatively short order by some other entrepreneur who comes in with a different restaurant, a different bakery, whatever it is. And it's why I think that an other stimulus package is so important. And if I think I said my comments, I view these not so much as stimulus packages because they're not technically intended to stimulate economic activity. They're more like a bridge loan or an insurance policy against these artificial shutdowns. Restaurants are not closed because they're bad business models. They're closed because people are nervous about going out to eat. And in many localities, the authorities have said you can't go out to eat. So we need an other bridge loan to get us through that. All that means is that on the other side of this, there are many more restaurants likely to be open. We've seen this happen again and again. The big example of it was in the late 1990s with the dot-com boom and bust. A lot of dot-com technology companies went under in '99, 2000, 2001. But those that didn't thrived. Amazon was a startup company in 1999. Facebook was a twinkle in Mark Zuckerberg's eye. Google was a search engine and a search engine only in 1999. Those companies that survived, those businesses that survived, that restaurant that makes it through, will thrive on the other end of this. And the timing of that is the only thing that's uncertain at this point.
Well, I couldn't be happier to hear those thoughts. It's very optimistic. It's a good way to look at it because we will all be thriving again in the months and years to come. So Scott, I can't thank you enough for being here, sharing your expertise and thoughts with us. I am looking at another comment. One of our attendees says that FYI, the 60% number is permanent per Yelp, NBC, and ABC News.
Yeah, I'm seeing that comment. I'm seeing that comment. And that could very, that is not true yet. I mean, I've seen that forecast that if it plays out and if it takes four, five, or six months to get back to full economic potential, that, yeah, we could lose permanently 60% of restaurants. But the very, my whole point about creative destruction is the very next day, there will be new restaurants created. There will be new small businesses created. That excess capacity will refill itself. Because if nothing else, and I think this all makes sense to the people on this call, I have cooked dinner for myself and my family for 175 nights in a row. And I like cooking, but I'm sick and tired of it. So as soon as I can go out to eat again, my family's going out to eat for 175 nights in a row. The demand will be there, and the supply will rise to meet that demand. Of that, I am confident. I do not deny the disruption that will take place between here and there. But when we get back to normal, the demand will be there in spades.
I believe to be, I believe that to be true also. I think I know a lot of people who are demanding it already, and it's not possible. So I do, I do look forward to those days again. If anybody has any more questions for Scott Clemens, I think we're good. Thanks very much again, and I look forward to seeing you when we can gather in person.
Likewise.
Thanks, Scott. I'll turn it over to Bob Bauer now.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Scott, thank you for another valuable presentation. We always appreciate your insight. Since a lot of folks on here know my wife, I'll say I'm okay with having eaten her food 175 days in a row. Later on, we'll talk, but yeah. Just a couple of quick notes, things that came up over the last couple of days that I wanted to just bring folks' attention. I'll start kind of going backwards with FDA. They even asked, why, why do you want us to speak on this potential adulteration rule? It doesn't pertain imports. Well, we know you want to educate your suppliers about the need to comply with that regulation. So that's why we had them on here, because it is important that you get that message to them to keep supply chain going intact, because if they run into issues, that's going to impact you. Segueing with that, the Food Safety Preventive Control Alliance training on the potential adulteration rule is the best way for them to get what they need to know. And there's even free modules that would be beneficial for importers to take, give you a little bit better understanding of what the regulation is. So we definitely recommend that. Any kind of FSPCA training, anything related to FSMA is the way to go. And many of you know that I was asked to be on the task force, and we put together the import rule course. And FDA is with you on every step of the way there. It's an FDA document without being an FDA document because, hey, nothing ends up in those manuals. What out there, okay. So definitely recommend the FSPCA training. Couple other notes here. Arbitrations were mentioned yesterday in the contract area. So just one of the call of your attention, arbitration hearings are being, you know, they're ongoing. We've done two since the pandemic, all via Zoom, and they're working out fine. So it is a vehicle that you still have. Board of Directors meets on Monday. The reason I bring that out to you, they're always looking for input from the entire membership. We don't want you to assume that the board is thinking of issues the same way you are. And the more input you give to staff and to board members, the better. Better we can be the association it needs to be. Definitely want you to verify with your foreign suppliers that their facility registration renewals have been done. I know I mentioned that yesterday, but I really want to stress that the renewal period ends December 31st. We will make sure that your folks are renewed. And keep in mind, as mentioned, the DUNES number issue could create some bumps in a row. So we want to do it early and often kind of thing. And then finally, Nicole mentioned a couple of things this morning about the House not being quite as up to date or quite as on the board with the rest of us and with the Senate in terms of the MTB and GSP renewal. So it takes a matter of seconds for you to reach out to your congressman. You do it via email on their website or a quick call to either their DC office or their local one. And just say, ask so-and-so that, you know, we need support for passage of MTB and GSP. Even if you are not directly impacted by that, we ask you to do that because, again, it creates the voice of the import sector, food in particular in this case. And we need to make sure that they understand that there is an industry out there. And, you know, it could be another issue comes up for you, you know, six months from now, and some other members who aren't directly impacted make a call or send an email as well. So the more of a voice that members of Congress and folks at the agencies hear, the better off we're all going to be. So I want to do those pretty quickly, trying not to go too over the time limit that we had set. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Erin to close things up.
And that does conclude our 2020 AFI Town Meeting. I am looking forward to making these meetings, our annual convention and town meeting, happen in person in the near future. I hope you got some useful information out of the last two days. I know that there's a lot of information at one time, but you will be receiving the presentations from AFI next week when Ed sends out our surveys. And speaking of Ed, I just would like to thank once again our IT Director, Ed Spader. He is the man behind the scene. This has been a Herculean effort. I know all of us have had to shift in many ways to make a virtual event happen. But, and we're all looking forward to gathering in person, but I don't think anyone is looking forward to it as much as maybe Ed Spader is. Any of our, I know, technological IT director people are probably looking forward to us getting back to our convention locales and venues out of their hair. So I want to thank Ed once again. I also want to thank our sponsors and, of course, our speakers for all of you for being here. It's been, it's been great working with all of you through these last few weeks. Until we meet again in the new year, I want you all to please stay safe, stay healthy, and take good care. Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
You all.
I'm Mike.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes.
Thank you all.